Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you to those who've managed to come to the hearing room today in the face of the rail strike which is affecting movements in Sydney. We start with an acknowledgement of country. On behalf of the Commission, I wish to acknowledge the Darug people, the traditional custodians of the land upon which this hearing is taking place. We pay our respects to the elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people who may be attending the hearing in person today, as well as those who will be following the hearing on the live stream. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Good morning Commissioners and good morning everybody following the Royal Commission proceeding online and in the room. You'll see we've got two witnesses ready to go, but before I introduce them, Commissioners, can I just outline what will happen today? So our first witnesses today will be from the Commonwealth Department of Social Services. And after their evidence, you will have the pre-record that we did with William. I deferred that from yesterday's hearing and we'll play that just before morning tea. Then after morning tea, we'll move to Ms Dendell from, who is the Acting Executive Director of the New South Wales Department of Community and Justice. And you'll hear her evidence through to lunchtime. Then after lunch, you'll hear from Ms Short from the NDI. And then there'll be a further pre-record from Dave. And I understand, subject just to the train issues today, Dave might also join us in the hearing room. And Commissioners, we plan to adjourn at around 3:30. And the Commissioners may be aware, and for those in the hearing room, that the Royal Commission will hold an afternoon tea this afternoon. And we have invited service providers in the area of Western Sydney who are engaged with working with people who are homeless and housing services to meet the Royal Commission in person. I think everybody is welcome to the afternoon tea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms Mitchell, welcome back to the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
Mr Flavell, welcome to you. Thank you for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence and thank you for the joint statement which you have provided, which we have read. Just to explain where everybody is, Commissioner Galbally, whom you can see on screen, is joining the hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner Ryan is on my left. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who is located over there, he will administer the affirmation or the oath, as the case may be.
Ms Mitchell, I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr Flavell, I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
Thank you. So can I first deal with some introductions? Ms Mitchell, welcome back to the Royal Commission. You've previously given evidence at the Royal Commission at Public Hearing 21 and Public Hearing 22. Might need you to say yes rather than not.
Yes.
And you've provided us statements in relation to both those public hearings.
I did.
And just for the benefit of people who might be seeing you or hearing you for the first time, you hold the role of Deputy Secretary Disability and Carers in the Department of Social Services.
I do.
And that's a role that you've held since November 2021.
That's correct.
Your area means that you're responsible for policies and programs providing targeted supports and services for people with disability and their carers.
That's correct.
And that includes the DSS policy responsibilities in relation to the National Disability Insurance Scheme.
That's correct.
And Mr Flavell, welcome to the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
People always get worried when I say that, but welcome. So you hold the position of Deputy Secretary, Social Security, also at the department.
I do.
And what are your particular areas of responsibility in that capacity?
So it's best thought of as two main responsibilities. One in relation to social security policy generally, so advice about the facet of payments the Commonwealth makes to individuals. And then the other is broadly in relation to the Commonwealth's responsibilities for housing and homelessness, noting that that's a shared responsibility with the Department of Treasury, who also have key responsibilities in relation to housing policy.
And that includes the administration of the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement?
It does.
All right. Now, together you've prepared a joint statement and you say that that has been prepared with the assistance of lawyers and officers in the department. Is that right?
Correct.
And you've both had a chance to read the statement before this morning?
Yes.
Are there any changes that either of you wish to make to any parts of the statement?
I, um, there was one, not a change, well, sorry, I'll just unpage, sorry. I thought we might get to a discussion. On that paragraph 54 of the statement, there has been an update. So where it says, these changes are scheduled to come into effect in September 2022, that's now October 2022, and that's to be rolled out over 12 months, not 18 months.
Okay, so the change to that would be to paragraph 54. And this is the fourth sentence, so it should read this. These changes are scheduled to come into effect in October 2022 and to be rolled out over the next 12 months.
Correct.
And with those changes, do you both say that the contents of the statement are true and correct?
Yes.
So in the time that we've got, we may not be able to cover absolutely every topic in the, that you've covered in the statement. And as the Chair said, the Commissioners have read the statement and the statement will be tendered in due course. But I want to start with the relevance of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities to the work and the policy development concerning homelessness and housing for the Commonwealth. This is a matter that you've dealt with in the statement. And if you want to refer to these parts, you're very welcome to paragraph 112 and 113. Are we right to understand that for DSS, the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability is an important instrument to take into account in the development of policy?
It guides the development of our policies.
When you talk about guiding the development of the policy, what do you actually mean by guide?
So when we, in any development of any policy or any framework, the CRDP is a, well, it's a guiding factor in that we consider all aspects of the CRDP and make sure that we're adhering to the obligations for Australia.
Well, some might say that as a matter of law, that the CRPD has to do more than guide. It creates binding international legal obligations on the department, does it not? And so if the CRPD is guiding policy, is the approach that you're looking to ensure that any policies comply with the CRPD?
That's correct.
Objectives? And to the extent that we just look at the articles in the CRPD, you've referred to Article 19.
Yep.
And you've referred to Article 28. And Article 28 is a right of persons with disabilities to an adequate standard of living for themselves and their family. And that includes adequate living, adequate housing and adequate living conditions. When you look at the content of that right, how does that right inform the development of policy?
So if I can refer to the development of the Australian Disability Strategy, every aspect of the rights of people with disabilities to live and a fulfilling life and adhere to all of those rights is embedded in every aspect of the strategy. And starting with how we actually consulted on the strategy, there was significant consultation over a two-year period with, with people with disabilities, with their disability representative organisations. It's actually a co-design process that the department and my team are incredibly proud of because it was so comprehensive and understanding.
Sorry to jump in any of that today. I do want to ask you some questions about the development of the particular strategy, but just generally, looking at these concepts of adequate housing and continuous improvement in living conditions. And I'm sorry if my question wasn't clear, but just how do you actually engage with that right in the development of policy? Do you look, for example, at international examples as to how this works in practice? Do you look at this from a purely legal perspective? Do you think about whether or not policy has to meet certain indicators to achieve what the rights directing the Commonwealth to do?
I wouldn't like, I don't know the complete answer to that question, I have to say. But of course, we look at our obligations under the rights and that drives every policy we have. And why I went to talk about the Australian Disability Strategy is that if you look at our statement on, at paragraph 114, we talk about governments in Australia. So it is about when we work with governments in Australia about those rights. And at the strategy, at page 55 of the strategy, we talk about the roles and responsibilities of the different governments in Australia. So that's where I was, why I was going down that path.
Okay, so in terms of, from a Commonwealth thinking, if Australia was to meet its obligations in relation to adequate housing and continuous improvement of living conditions, one aspect of it is not only to focus on the Commonwealth, but also to look to the extent to which the states and territories designed their policy to meet those obligations?
Well, under 114B, we talk about actions under the strategy, which all states and territories and local government have signed for actions under the strategy.
When you're referring to paragraph 114, you say this, governments in Australia, including the Australian Government, intend to fulfil their progressively realisable obligations under the CRPD in relation to housing through four areas. Provision of social and affordable housing, action under the strategy, the implementation of the National Construction Code 2022 and the NDIS.
Yes.
So those would be the sort of four pillars for, from the Commonwealth's perspective, to meet those obligations under Article 28, and I will say take it Article 29. And to do that, that's not just solely the responsibility of the Commonwealth, is that right? It has to include the states and territories.
Governments have responsibility.
And if we took the first element, the provision of social and affordable housing, do I take it that that means the provision of actual housing or dwellings, so building?
Well, yes, it does mean the provision of social and affordable housing. And under the strategy, whilst all governments work together under the strategy, the primary responsibility for delivery of public and social and community housing lies with the states and territories.
So this is an indication that the Commonwealth's about to say, right, we're in the business of building affordable and social housing. That's something that is delivered on the ground by states and territories, is that right?
That's correct. And that's what they agreed, was their responsibility under the Australian Disability Strategy.
Right, so I might come to the strategy and also another document. I want to start though to ask whether, and Mr Flavell will jump in if you feel you wish to answer any of these questions. But can I start with the earlier strategy, the National Disability Strategy, that covered the period 2010 to 2020? Are you both familiar with that?
I haven't read it, but I am reasonably familiar with it.
Well, except this proposition that the National Disability Strategy covering 2010 to 2020 said this, that the Commonwealth states and territories are working together to develop a national quality framework to achieve better outcomes for people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, including people with disability, by improving the quality and integration of the services they receive. So that's the commitment from the previous strategy. And so there was an express reference to people who were homeless, but also those at risk of homelessness. Now, in your work within the department, are either of you aware of whether a national quality framework was developed?
I am advised by my team that it was developed, but I haven't read it.
And in terms of a national quality framework, the idea of national quality frameworks is not unique to housing, is it? It's a tool that's used in policy generally.
It is.
Do you know if there was any evaluation of the national quality framework in relation to addressing homelessness or people at risk of homelessness?
No, I don't know if there was an evaluation, but I know that, you'll see in my statement at paragraph 14, we talk about UNSSW, New South Wales, conducted a review of implementation of the previous strategy. And if there was an evaluation, it would have been part of that, but I don't, I don't know.
You're not across the dink.
No, I'm not.
So during the life of the previous strategy, so 2010 to 2020, there was also the development of a National Housing and Homelessness Agreement. So, Mr Flavell, this is in your department, is it not?
That's in my responsibility, that's correct.
And in terms of the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement, this is an agreement between the Commonwealth and all states and territories in Australia.
Correct.
And the purpose of this national agreement is that the Commonwealth and the states recognise they have a mutual interest in improving housing outcomes across the housing spectrum, including outcomes for Australians who are homeless or at risk of homelessness and needs to work together to achieve those outcomes. So that's the purpose of the agreement.
Correct, yeah.
And to the extent this agreement exists, were you involved in any drafting of this agreement?
No, as per my statement, I commenced this role in November 2020 and the current National Housing and Homelessness Agreement was signed and took effect from 1 July 2018.
Right. And neither of you may be able to answer this, but do either of you know whether or not the previous National Disability Strategy had any role to play in the development of this agreement?
I don't have that knowledge.
So in terms of the way in which the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement operates, it's currently said to be on foot until the 30th of June 2023. But are we right in understanding through a statement that the intention is to extend it for a further year, is that right?
That's correct. So the Commonwealth Minister for Housing and Homelessness has written to her state colleagues and proposed a one-year extension of the agreement. Obviously, that's subject to the agreement of all parties before taking effect.
And you've set out in your statement how the agreement operates, but can I just ask you a couple of sort of features about it? So at an overall level, the way in which this agreement operates is that the Commonwealth provides funding. The funding is then delivered to states and territories according to the formula set out in the agreement.
Yes.
There's an expectation that the states and territories will match that funding in particular areas?
Only in respect of homelessness. So they're required to at least spend or match the Commonwealth's stated target, if you want to call it that, for homelessness services.
And one of the requirements in terms of this agreement is to meet particular performance monitoring and reporting obligations?
So under the agreement, there's certain obligations placed on the states and territories. So for instance, the requirement for them to publish, to have and publish housing and homelessness strategies and some other requirements in terms of performance reporting. They do that in a variety of ways, but generally speaking, the main mechanism is by providing an annual statement of assurance that's provided to the Commonwealth as part of the conditionality of the agreement.
And what does the Commonwealth do when it receives those statements of assurance? Is there any sort of a value added process that applies at the Commonwealth level?
There's an assessment of that, but obviously in some cases it's binary. So for instance, the requirement to have a homelessness and housing strategy, it's about the existence of one. It's not a commentary about the quality or other aspects of the strategies, the individual strategies themselves.
And when you talk about the existence of having a policy, the states and territories are each required to have a particular policy?
Yes, a strategy.
And that policy's got to be public?
Yes.
In terms of then the reporting against those policies and complying with the requirements of the agreement, does the Commonwealth publish any reports or any data on an annual basis?
We, I'm just trying to think about whether we publish in a consolidated form, certainly in things like our Department of Social Services Annual Report and the associated documents for the budget, we do do some reporting in relation to the agreement.
Okay. And as part of the reporting from the states and territories, is there a requirement to report particular data?
There is. So for instance, financial data. So they're required to tell the, to report to the Commonwealth how much or in what way the contribution has been spent. So while, to give you an example, while there is a requirement to spend at least $135 million on homelessness services, we know that the states use about collectively around $600 million of the Commonwealth contribution for that. And in addition, put in about $600 million of their own resources to bring the total to about $1.2 billion.
There's data in terms of how the money's spent, but what about data in terms of getting a sense of the prevalence of homelessness or insecure housing? Is that data that has to be collected?
So there are some data that's collected, some directly, some indirectly. So that's, it's a requirement under the agreement for the states to provide de-identified data about people accessing specialist homelessness services. That data is provided to the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare. And the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare publishes regular, but also an annual report about the use of specialist homelessness services that provides a picture. There's a range of other data that the states and territories provide. And the agreement itself has a schedule in relation to data improvement. And there's been a separate strand of work conducted by the Commonwealth and states to actually develop some further indicators.
Is that the data improvement plan for 2019 to 2023?
And that resulted, I think, in a new schedule being added to the agreement that outlined some of the additional housing-related indicators or information that's being collected. I'd refer to that as a work in progress because some of it will, for instance, rely on the most recent national census in 2021, for instance. So it's, it's seen as sort of an ongoing process of improving the availability of data in relation to housing and homelessness.
Well, just in terms of the reference that you've made to the AIHW and also to the ABS, in terms, sorry to use all of those shorthands, in terms of census data, you're aware, aren't you, that they use different definitions of homelessness?
That, I'm aware that there can be different definitions used.
So what's the definition of homelessness that applies in relation to this agreement?
I don't think that the definition is outlined anywhere in the agreement.
I couldn't see a definition of homelessness in the agreement. Is that a weakness in the agreement if it doesn't have a definition of homelessness?
Weakness maybe, but I think it does reflect the fact that by being too precise for the definition, there is a risk, I guess, of missing out at the boundaries, depending on what the definition that one uses.
So while there's no definition, the agreement does set out what are described as national priority homelessness cohorts and homelessness priority policy reform areas. And can I ask you, are you familiar with the national priority homelessness cohorts?
I am, under the agreement, yes.
And so can I sort of briefly, just for the benefit of people following the hearing, the national priority homelessness cohorts are first, women and children affected by family intermistic violence. Secondly, children and young people. Thirdly, Indigenous Australians. It's page 14 of the agreement, if that assists Mr Flavell behind, tab seven. People experiencing repeat homelessness. People exiting institutions and care into homelessness and older people. So they're the priority areas.
Yes, that's correct.
And there is no priority cohort area that specifically identifies people with disability. You agree with that?
No, that's correct.
And to the extent, of course, there may be people with disability who would come within the existing cohorts, there's nothing that puts a flag that people with disability might be a priority homelessness cohort. You agree with that?
I'm not sure what you mean by flag, Council.
Well, an express reference or something to identify a connection between homelessness and people living with disability.
So are you talking about the priority, the priority groups?
Yep.
This, yes, there is no separate flag.
Do you accept that's a deficiency in the agreement? Not to have specific reference to people with disability in the priority homelessness cohorts?
It's hard for me to say deficiency. Obviously reflected the view of the then Prime Minister and premiers and state and chief ministers who signed it. I'm not, as I've said, I wasn't around at the time, so I'm not actually privy to the discussions that happened at that most senior political level about why there was a determination made of particular groups being, being put in as priority cohorts.
Well, there was the national strategy on foot at the time that specifically identified the home, the risk of homelessness for people with disability and people with disability who are homeless. But they haven't made their way into this agreement, have they?
No, that's correct.
Now, in terms of the states and territories, am I right in understanding that under the agreement, the states and territories can also identify additional priority homelessness cohorts?
Yes, so this, under the agreement, the states also sign bilateral agreements with the Commonwealth and that outlines the specific funding that they get. The states are able to nominate or determine other priority cohorts, that's correct.
All right, so can I ask you now about the homelessness priority policy reform areas? Are you familiar with them?
Yes.
So there's three. One is to achieve better outcomes for people. And that is setting out how the desired outcomes for individuals will be measured. And it may include a focus on priority groups, economic and social participation. So that's one, achieving better outcomes. Secondly, early intervention and prevention, including through mainstream services, setting out actions to be taken through homelessness services and mainstream services. And that may include focus on particular client groups or services. And then thirdly, a commitment to service programme and design. And that's said to be evidenced and researched based that shows what evidence and research was being used to design responses to homelessness and how responses and strategies will be evaluated. So you're familiar with those three areas?
Yes.
And is there any reporting done by the states and territories against those three priority reform areas?
Not, they may choose to do it specifically, but again, under the agreement, they're required to, to be addressed in the homelessness strategy. So I keep going back to the point that under the agreement itself, it's the requirement for that to be addressed. It's not the Commonwealth's role under the agreement to determine the effectiveness or to make any other commentary about the appropriateness of those particular, the way that those priority areas have been determined and laid out in the strategies.
Notwithstanding the absence of any reference to people with disability in the agreement, is it the Commonwealth's understanding that this agreement should address the rights of people who are homeless, who live with disability, and/or the rights of people who are at risk of homelessness who live with disability?
Yes.
And has there been any consideration in the decision to extend this agreement for a further year to ensure that people with disability will be identified as a priority area for reform and/or a priority cohort?
Council, I think it's probably better for me to refer to the fact that one of the elements of the agreement is the Productivity Commission is conducting a review into the, broadly speaking, the sort of effectiveness and operation of the current National Housing and Homelessness Agreement. into the, broadly speaking, the sort of effectiveness and operation of the current National Housing and Homelessness Agreement. That's been a public process with submissions sought. The report to the Treasurer from the Productivity Commission coincidentally is to be delivered today.
So we understand. Unless you can give us any sneak peeks.
I have not seen the report and, and it goes directly to the Treasurer today, so I, I won't see it. Although my understanding is that that will be public, really publicly released in around two weeks' time. And that Productivity Commission process explicitly in terms of the terms of reference was asked to look at, at the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement and its compatibility with Australia's Disability Strategy and other obligations. And the reason I'm making that point is because I think rather than sort of talking about the extra year, which is really a rollover in an existing agreement, the work of the Productivity Commission, including with that explicit focus on people with disability, in my view, would be a material factor to be taken into account for a future National Housing and Homelessness Agreement, should of course all, that all governments decide to have a successor agreement.
So you've set out that Productivity Commission review in the statement, Commissioner, as a paragraph one hundred and six to one hundred and eleven. And the Productivity Commission, though, is reviewing the agreement that's silent on disability against a strategy that's no longer in force. Is that right?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
So the Productivity Commission is reviewing the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement that is silent on disability. But it's required to review it against the strategy that is no longer in force.
My, my recollection is that it's actually explicit in the terms of reference, the reference to the current Australia's Disability Strategy.
Well, I might ask you to take that on notice, because I think in terms of the sequence of events, it appeared that the Productivity Commission was examining the earlier strategy, or you think it's the current strategy? Because the, I'll, I'll ask you this, because the former strategy does refer to homelessness and people at risk of homelessness. The current strategy, which I'm about to ask you about, is absolutely silent on homelessness.
So, Counsel, I'm referring to the Commonwealth submission to the Productivity Commission review, so that's a publicly available document.
And is that speaking to the current strategy?
It, it doesn't. It says, "The terms of reference for the PC review of the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement includes considering the extent to which the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement is meeting the obligations of governments under Australia's Disability Strategy twenty twenty one to twenty thirty one."
So it's picking up the current one, all right. Well, can I ask you about the current strategy? And you've dealt with this, and I think Ms. Mitchell, this is your area. You've included a copy of the current strategy that was launched in December last year.
It was.
And the strategy also sets out priority areas. And there is a priority area concerning housing. But there is no priority area concerning homelessness, is there?
No, the, this, the new strategy really, as I mentioned before, New South Wales Uni had a look at the previous strategy. They then determined and worked with all the disability sector to determine what would go into this strategy. So this strategy was, the new strategy is very much around implementation compared to the previous strategy. So they're really focused on what we can achieve. And rather than having homelessness as a, a particular individual strategy, I mean, there are many that we could have had. They really, they looked at focusing on the perfect protective factors for homelessness. So they really focused on education, justice system, employment.
But there is no priority area around homelessness or risk of homelessness in the new strategies there.
Not specifically.
And to the extent that the Productivity Commission is reviewing the agreement with respect to the current strategy, they're not speaking to each other, are they?
Well, under the, under the strategy, as I mentioned before, all, all governments, state and territory and local governments have signed up to the strategy. And, and part of the strategy is the provision of social and community housing, which is, you know, directly related to homelessness and availability of housing. And so, so to that extent, it is absolutely part of the, the Australia's Disability Strategy with all the states and territories.
But it's hard, isn't it, that if there's no express reference as a priority area to homelessness or people at risk of homelessness, then it's possible that that area can be overlooked. And the focus can shift to the accessibility of housing or, or people exist in existing housing arrangements.
That is possible.
And you would accept, wouldn't you, that for people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, those circumstances put them among the most vulnerable members of our community who live with disability, would you accept that?
Absolutely.
And do you think that there really is a deficiency in the twenty twenty one, twenty thirty one strategy with respect to addressing the most vulnerable members of our community with disability, being homeless people or people at risk of homelessness, that they have become invisible, haven't they?
I, I go back to what I said just a moment ago, and I, I think that whilst the term homelessness is not specifically written into the strategy, it was absolutely a consideration in the consultation process. And in fact, during the consultation process, there are at least five organisations who represent people who are homeless as part of the consultation process.
Was there any discussion with people who were actually living with disability and who were homeless at the time? Were they part of the consultation?
I don't know the answer to that question. We certainly consulted over three thousand people.
But, and you've set that out in some detail in your statement in terms of the consultation process. And take it that we accept that the development of the strategy was informed by that consultation. But do you accept there might have been a risk that the consultation did not get to the least visible people with disability in our community?
There's a risk in any consultation process that you, that you may miss a cohort. But as I, in my opening to your original first question, this is, this was a significant process over two years. And we did consult over three thousand people. We had two and a half thousand survey responses, we had certified focus groups. We had academic workshops. And as part of the strategy now, we have an advisory committee that is chaired by Ben Gottland, who is the, Dr. Ben Gottland, who is also the Human Rights Commissioner. The Disability Reform Ministers meet monthly to discuss all the issues as part of the strategy. And, and as I just mentioned before, there were five organisations that I'm aware of that were part of the consultation process, who, who specifically represent people who are homeless.
There's also a parliamentary committee looking at, doing an inquiry into homelessness around the same time as the Disability Strategy was being finalised. And the, what we've seen, the outcome of that inquiry was to identify real risks for people with disability in terms of the homelessness system. So you can't say that this question of homeless people with disability or people at risk of becoming homeless with disability were not, it could not have been on the Commonwealth's radar in the development of the strategy.
I wasn't there as part of the development of the strategy, so.
Ms. Mitchell, I think you said that the one reason why homelessness was not specifically mentioned in the strategy was because the focus was on protective strategies. Why would that be a reason for not specifically referring to homelessness?
I think, Commissioner, there would have been a few areas that we wouldn't have referred to in the strategy. I wasn't there as part of the development of the strategy, but I'm, I'm advised. I'm advised that the protective factors towards homelessness was the focus because they, I mean, all indicators are if you are able to be employed, then, you know, your chances of homelessness are lessened.
If you're developing protective strategies to improve the outcome in a particular area, you might expect a particular area for which improvements were expected to be expressly identified. And the relationship between the strategies and the outcome to be explained, wouldn't it?
So we were, we weren't looking at protective strategies. So per se, we were looking at the protective factors required to support people from entering into homelessness.
Mrs. Eastman has asked you about the consultative process, which you've explained, and seems to have involved a very large number of people and organisations. Why do you think it didn't manage to produce suggestions that homelessness should have been specifically included and indeed expressly made a priority area? Why do you think that happened?
As I understand it, Commissioner.
I know you weren't there.
No, no, I promise not to say it again. As I understand it, the focus for those who were consulted across the two-year period was around affordable and accessible housing. And so that is where the discussions went. I don't know what the discussion's focused on for homelessness.
Do you think it might suggest that the people with disability are actually quite a diverse group? They're not a uniform group. And if you're going to consult with people with disability, you need, and not talking about you personally, but the process needs to ensure that all relevant sections of the disability community are actually contacted and able to make a contribution to the process. In other words, there does seem to be an assumption quite often that if you consult with disability groups, then everybody's covered, but that may not in fact tell you very much about the needs of particular groups within the disability community.
That's correct, Commissioner, and I would, I would add to that and say that it's such a diverse group across the disability sector that many of the different areas of the sector don't agree with each other, so.
Which is an even bigger reason for ensuring that you contact all of them.
So in the, in the development of the strategy, you know, we looked at people with intellectual disability, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with disability, women with disability. And as I say, there were several organisations who had specific focus on homelessness.
So one final thing, just on, on the strategy, there's also the outcomes approach. And the outcome areas for inclusive homes and communities address the two priority areas being housing affordability stress and housing accessibility. And in terms of those outcomes, these going to be the sort of measures that the Commonwealth will take in relation to examining how the strategy will work. A copy of this, Commissioner, is a bit tricky, but it's behind tab six. And it's page two, and it's a folded out sheet. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but just to get a sense of where the outcome framework fits in to the way in which the strategy over the ten-year period is going to be measured.
So your question was, are these the key indicators that we will be measuring? Yes, that's correct. But you will notice that some of them are baseline measures. So if you have a look in the uncoloured section, that is about measuring the number of people with disability who have reported unmet need. And then if we go to, oh, sorry, I might be on the wrong page. Did you say page six?
Page two. So it's got the heading outcome area, inclusive homes and communities.
So, so same. So if you look at housing accessibility, the number of social housing dwellings that meet livable housing design silver accessibility standards. So that will be a baseline measurement across all the states and territories. And then for future measurement will be the number of homes that are built to standards according to the National Construction Code and the livable housing design. So that is a future measurement.
Okay, just, I might, because I'm conscious of the time, and I might just ask you now, and this might be Mr. Flavell, a question for you. In terms of the National Construction Code, that we spend hours on this, but that's really a code designed to get a, a national approach to the way in which dwellings are constructed. And it's looking at achieving accessibility and meeting, as you've just said, Ms. Mitchell, things such as the livable housing design. Livable housing design's got three levels to it, silver, I think, gold and platinum.
Yes.
So silver's the lowest level, like that's the basic level. Platinum's the, you know.
So in the silver level, it's, the minimum requirement is one accessible shower, accessible entry, strengthening of walls, that sort of thing.
So these are, these are all measures where there is an existing dwelling and how somebody might have access within the dwelling. But when you look at these inclusive homes and community measures, none of these measures pick up getting people in to housing and the situation of people's pathways into homelessness and the pathways out of homelessness. Do you agree with that?
I do agree.
Thank you. All right. Now, you've said in the statement, I think at paragraph sixty-three, that coming out of the recent election, there's a proposed National Housing and Homelessness Plan that will be developed.
That's correct.
I'm not sure whether, other than referring to the fact of it being an election commitment and an intention to do so, what can you tell us about when a National Housing and Homelessness Plan might be developed?
Probably not much because as an election, like a lot of election commitments will be ratified in the upcoming October budget, regardless of whether they involve dollars or not. So I think after October or later in the year, there'll be more substantive statements about the process. But I think there's enough in the election commitment for people to get a sense that it will be a, a quite, I don't want to say lengthy, but a, a, an ongoing process of collaboration with state governments and a range of other stakeholders with interest in developing that plan.
Is there any guarantee that people with disability, in particular people with disability or homeless or at risk of homelessness will be included in that plan?
I, I would be staggered if they were not included.
The other proposal is the establishment of a National Housing Supply and Affordability Council. Is that something in your remit?
The same, yeah. So there's effectively a range of commitments the incoming government has made in relation to a housing agenda.
And to the extent that the council does not presently exist, are we to understand that the purpose of the council will be comprised of experts from a diverse range of fields that could include finance, economics, urban development, residential construction, urban planning and social housing sectors?
Yes.
No express reference to disability in the list of experts?
No, but I'd observed that in sort of past incarnations of these sorts of things, you can have an expert panel that actually has a whole lot of advisory groups that might provide input into it. And again, I think it's highly plausible that people with disability would, would be represented as part of such an advisory group.
And would you accept that it is important for people with disability to be represented in something as significant as a Housing Supply and Affordability Council?
Certainly their views and the issue should absolutely be front of mind for the work of, of a council such as that.
And the Royal Commission's recently held a hearing in Alice Springs where issues of housing and overcrowding in housing and the unsuitability of dwellings in remote and very remote communities, certainly an issue for First Nations people with disability. Would it be expected that there would be representation from First Nations communities on a council of this kind?
Again, I refer to what I've said earlier, which is you can think of this as the council, which might have a broad remit in thinking about issues like overarching government policies to increase the supply of housing generally. They may well then have a series of advisory groups. And I would certainly think that as part of that broader governance structure, the particular issues around First Nations people with disability would, would feature in that.
And coming back to some of the earlier questions I asked you about the CRPD and paragraph one hundred and fourteen, where you outlined the progressively realising obligations of the CRPD. Would you agree with me that a National Housing Supply and Affordability Council would be an appropriate forum to take a rights-based approach to housing and homelessness? And that would be a place where the Commonwealth's commitments to the CRPD could also factor in? And that would be a place where the Commonwealth's commitments to the CRPD could also factor in?
Yes, yes. Noting, of course, the council does not yet exist and more detail about its specific functions and other associated matters are still matters that the government, the Commonwealth government will need to consider.
Would the Commonwealth be prepared to provide information to the Royal Commission as both the National Housing and Homelessness Plan develops? And also any development of the National Housing Supply and Affordability Council is developed, subject obviously to the restrictions on cabinet in confidence. But is that something that the Royal Commission could receive updates from the Commonwealth on?
Yes, we'd be happy to provide updates. And the other element, which is referred to in our statement, is of course the establishment of the ten billion dollar National Housing and Homelessness Fund, which as per the election commitment, also has commitments around the livability standards that you referred to earlier.
Right. One, coming back to the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement. So Mr. Flavell, in the statement, it's right, isn't it, that the Commonwealth government provides one point six billion dollars each year to the states and territories?
That's correct.
And this is to deal with the access to secure and affordable housing across the housing spectrum?
It's to, yes, to make a contribution towards that outcome.
And in that, the funding, there's also specific funding earmarked for the provision of homelessness services.
Correct.
And I think previous budget, one hundred and twenty-nine million, but your statement indicates that for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three period, it's one hundred and thirty-five million.
That's correct. Generally, these amounts are indexed year to year.
And is that will be at homelessness generally? Does it attach to the particular priority cohorts in any way?
Not specifically, no.
And to the extent we look at the information you provided in the statement, are we right to understand that from the Commonwealth, there is no specific funding earmarked for people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness who live with disability?
Not that cohort, no.
In terms of.
Sorry, sorry, nor are any other priority cohorts. So of that one hundred and thirty-five million dollars you've referred to, there's no specific allocation for any of the priority cohorts identified in the agreement.
Excuse me, you said other priority cohorts. Isn't it a fact that people with disability are not a priority cohort in the Commonwealth state funding agreement? It doesn't mention them at all.
Yeah, sorry, I misspoke. I should have said the priority cohorts in the agreement.
So there's no additional funding either through the agreement or elsewhere? Is there for earmarked homelessness funding for people with disability who are homeless or at risk of homelessness?
Not through the agreement.
And are we to understand, reading the statement, that to the extent that we are to see where the Commonwealth commits any funding and assistance for people with disability experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness, we pick up some of the other measures set out in the statement? Is that right?
Yes.
So they would be things like the Commonwealth Rent Assistance Scheme? And I think you say in the statement that costs the government fifteen, sorry, five billion dollars annually?
That's correct, yeah.
And that's the largest budget expenditure in the Commonwealth budget, is that right?
It's the largest Commonwealth, yeah, own programme, if you want to call it that, in relation to housing generally.
On housing?
Yeah.
And in terms of Commonwealth rent assistance, would you agree with me that if you are homeless, that's probably not going to give you much assistance, is it?
No, it's, I mean, by definition, it is for people in rental accommodation. So people who are homeless are not being directly assisted through that mechanism.
It's not a mechanism to assist to get into private rental accommodation?
No, it's more about the affordability of that accommodation. So by making it more affordability, improving the pathways for a range of people to be in secure and affordable housing outcomes.
And Ms. Mitchell, one of the other programmes or policies identified in the statement is specialist disability accommodation. That's your area, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
And so you've said the Australian Government is committed to working collaboratively with the state and territory governments to improve the provision of accessible and well-designed housing for people with disability. Is that right? Are we right to understand this isn't the Commonwealth saying we're about to get in the business of building social or accessible housing? Is it back to what I asked you earlier?
That's correct.
The Commonwealth has a commitment, but the delivery rests with the states and territories, is that right?
Except for specialist disability housing, which falls under the NDIS.
So but even under the NDIS, the Commonwealth's not in the business of building how NDIS housings per se, is it?
They work with, they, it would be best question asked to the NDIS later on this afternoon, but certainly they do develop dwellings for people with significant disabilities. And so to be eligible for an SCA accommodation place, you have to have extreme functional impairment or high functional support needs. So as I understand it, there is a mechanism for houses to be built by investors and they're built specifically for those clients.
All right. So just looking at your paragraph forty-five, so you say in relation to specialist disability accommodation, there's currently seventeen thousand six hundred and ninety-three active NDIS participants receiving around two hundred and forty-eight million dollars in SDA funding. And then you've got some other numbers in relation to participants who have funding in their plans for home modifications. Can I ask you this? On for NDIS participants who require modification to their homes, is it the Commonwealth's understanding that it is the Commonwealth's responsibility to pay for or meet the costs, I should say, meet the costs of modifications to a person's home?
If they are eligible under the NDIS.
Is there any role for the states and territories in relation to meeting the costs of home modification for people with disability who receive specialist disability accommodation?
I don't know the clear answer to that.
So, councillor, if I could be helpful, I mean, it's worth remembering, of course, that the NDIS is a collective scheme involving the Commonwealth and the state. So that it's to the extent that the states are providing funding to the NDIS, which they do, one can think of that as a joint contribution with the Commonwealth towards the cost of those modifications.
Right. Again, at paragraph forty-eight, refer again to election platform and commitments. And there were two specific commitments, ones to investigate solutions to excessive red tape and the mounting queue stopping people with disability accessing appropriate housing. And secondly, the investigation of a five hundred million dollar specialist disability accommodation underspend to ensure that people with disability can access appropriate housing. What can you tell us about the steps taken so far in relation to addressing both those issues?
So the, so these were election commitments. So in so much as we're working with our state and territory colleagues around the reduction of excessive red tape, we do that across the board. In relation to investigating the five hundred million SDA underspend, that it was an election commitment, not an actual statement. And the five hundred million dollars is actually the shortfall gap between what the Productivity Commission forecast for demand at full scheme versus current payments.
And what would be the nature of that investigation? Is it going to be something done internally or is that an area likely to be undertaken by an independent review?
That will be done internally to the Commonwealth government.
And next question I want to ask you, and then I might hand over to the commissioners. There is a reference to Housing Australia Future Fund. This is paragraph sixty-five to sixty-six. This is a commitment of establishing a ten billion dollar Housing Australia Future Fund. And you'll see in paragraph sixty-six that you refer to all new housing will be constructed in accordance with the principles of universal design to enable access to people with disability. So is this still in the phase of an election commitment? Or has there been concrete progress on this?
No, no. So I think that was one of the things I referred to earlier. I'm not sure I got the name right, but it is the Australia, the Housing Australia Future Fund. So it, like those other election commitments you mentioned in relation to the council and the plan, is still in the early stages of development. But the reference there at sixty-six is taken straight out of the election commitment made by the now government.
What do the principles of universal design mean against the context of the National Construction Code?
My understanding, and I may want to check this, is that it's in relation to meeting at least the silver standard that you referred to earlier.
Would we be right in understanding that if the Commonwealth is to commit ten billion dollars to a housing fund, that the aim is that into the future, Australia will have accessible housing for anyone who needs housing if they live with disability? Is that the objective of the fund?
Well, the objective of the fund is to increase the overall supply of social and affordable housing.
But one of the keys is to ensure that it's accessible housing. Royal Commission's heard that for many people, an offer of a house might sound good, but if it's not going to be accessible, then it might leave them still with those pathways into homelessness and a barrier out of homelessness.
Yeah.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, so the commitment, as stated at paragraph sixty-six, is that all new housing financed by that fund, in other words, which will be thirty thousand new dwellings, will be constructed in accordance with those universal design principles.
My final question for both of you is, do you accept that the housing policy is not connecting with a disability policy at the Commonwealth level at the present time?
Well, given that Mr. Flavell and I are in the same department and we have, I'm driving the changes in the Australian Disability Strategy and we take account of each other's policies in development of new policies. So historically, I think, so historically perhaps not. I think going forward, absolutely, that they will be connected. And in fact, even if you look at the Closing the Gap Sector Strengthening Plan, for example, it has disability in housing as two of the four key priority areas.
What needs to be done at the Commonwealth level to ensure that for meeting the rights of people with disability, that they're not going to slip between the gaps where you've got systems and policies that might be addressed by a range of different departments? Now, Ms. Mitchell, how do you hold that all together to ensure that there's that disability perspective on all policies that might touch on the interests of people with disability?
So one of the outcomes and areas in Australia's disability strategy is that all new policy development must take account of the outcomes and priority areas for people with disability. And so in so much as if the Attorney Generals is developing a new policy or the Department of Environments are developing a new policy, they must account for the outcomes under Australia's disability policy. It is a Commonwealth policy. Every Commonwealth entity is required to adhere to the policy. And as I've said a couple of times, states and territories and local government also have signed up.
Right. Thank you for your statement. I didn't get the chance to ask you some questions about emergency responses and the easy system, but the commissioners might have some questions on those, and she's too. Thank you, Chair.
I shall ask Commissioner Galbally first, if she has any questions she would like to put to you.
Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Just one or two. I'm just referring to the National Housing and Homeless Agreement. You think it would be appropriate for that agreement to reference Article nineteen and twenty-eight of the CRPD and Article eleven of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights? In other words, those things which the Commonwealth is meant to provide in terms of housing rights that are referenced by UN declarations? Do you think it's appropriate to have that articulated as one of the objectives or the outcomes of the housing agreement in the future?
That could certainly be in the future agreement. And we kind of answered this before, but do you also think that, given that people with disability are not listed as a priority housing cohort among the priority? That appears to be a significant deficit in the housing agreement that people with disability are not even referenced as a priority housing cohort. I know there is provision for states to add others, but nevertheless, it seems to be a glaring omission not to have people with disabilities listed among women and children. Given that, I think most surveys show that nearly a third of the people who occupy social housing, for example, are people with disabilities. It seems to be a glaring omission that they shouldn't be listed as a priority housing cohort. Do you agree?
Yes, Commissioner. As I said, I wasn't in the role at the time. This current agreement was developed through the course of twenty sixteen, seventeen, early eighteen. So not had the benefit of talking to the key decision-makers, noting obviously it was signed off by the then PM and premiers and chief ministers about what was the decision matrix for deciding on priority cohorts for inclusion in the current agreement.
I understand that the National Construction, was it the Code, was subject to a regulatory impact statement, which has been referenced by other witnesses. Is that something that was procured by the Commonwealth? And could you provide the Royal Commission with the text of the regulatory impact statement?
I'm not aware of the regulatory impact statement for the National Construction Code, but I will.
Regulatory impact analysis?
Analysis. I will, I have, I will have to take that one on notice.
Great.
Yes, thank you. We will hear evidence later today, I think, that from this short, that during the financial year ended thirty June two thousand and twenty-two, round about sixteen hundred participants in the NDIS reported that they had been homeless during that year. And a total of about six thousand two hundred NDIS participants had either been homeless or were at risk of homelessness in accordance with the definitions or criteria that were used by the NDIS through one or other of its agencies. Given those, that evidence and those facts, in the basis of your experience, what can be done to address that? What would you see as the way to approach that? Is it to just take the National Disability Strategy? Use the processes that have been provided there? Or is there something more specific that can be done within the framework of the NDIS to address a problem of apparent homelessness among NDIS participants of all people?
So Commissioner, the NDIS had to individual plans with all of those people?
I understand how it works. My question is, what can we do about it?
Well, I think evidence was given yesterday that you can't cure homelessness without housing availability.
And that's it?
Well, as I've stated before.
Are we in a slough of dispondent?
Commissioner, as I stated before, accessible and affordable housing is key to the Australian Disability Strategy. And the responsibility for the provision of social and community housing remains the responsibility of the states and territories. And we're working with them and as Mr. Flavell has said, we provide considerable money from the Commonwealth to support those processes in the states and territories.
But these are NDIS participants?
So the question might be better placed to the NDIS about the processes that they use. But if a person is at risk of becoming homeless and they're an NDIS participant, then the NDIS work with them very closely and they provide interim. then the NDIS work with them very closely and they provide interim accommodation. There is any number of actions that they take to stop someone falling into homelessness.
All right. Mr. Flavell, can you give us any more reason for optimism? That we can extract ourselves from the sloth of despondent?
Your words, Chair. I think I would agree with Ms. Mitchell that it's really, your question was specifically about NDIS. I think that is very much in the domain of the NDIA because these are people who have a plan and are in sort of full purview, if you want to call it that, of the agency. That's different than, I think, people outside the NDIS who may be homeless or have particular challenges around accessing suitable accommodation.
Yes. And to take up Commissioner Ryan's question and question?
And?
What follows from that?
I'm not sure I follow your question. Sorry, you have to.
Well, you made a statement and I just want to know what follows in terms of policies that might apply. Yes, I understand that it's the NDIA, but I'm looking to see what might be suggested for the Commonwealth's role in dealing with this, given that these are NDIS participants. The NDIS, I understand that the states have a financial role to play, but it is essentially a Commonwealth scheme. What can we do about that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. In relation to those NDIS participants, you know, I think it is very much in the purview of the NDIA. And the solutions are really for them because I think has been identified, one has to look at the pathways and how people who have a plan are finding themselves in a situation of homelessness. I think that is, you know, a significant concern.
Yes. Well, I rather thought that there might be something to be said for a National Disability Strategy addressing this issue, not just the, say, it's the NDIA's problem. But anyway, you say it's the NDIA that needs to.
Commissioner, the NDIS is actually a joint system between the Commonwealth and the states.
Yes, I understand that, but it's a Commonwealth Act that sets out the framework. And it's a Commonwealth responsibility in the sense that it's, the Commonwealth has enacted legislation in order to implement it after a process of consultation and cooperation with the states and the states providing financial assistance of one kind or another.
And the states agreeing to key elements of the scheme as well. The legislative framework, as you know, also includes, you know, particular responsibilities that the states to agree to.
Yes, and I understand that there's the, what's that expression that I keep forgetting? Optus, optus, whatever it is?
Aptos.
Yes, aptos, whatever. Yes, all right. Okay. Thank you. What do we do now, Ms. Eastman?
Well, that concludes the evidence. So thank you, Mr. Flavell and Ms. Mitchell. I deferred playing some evidence that we pre-recorded with William yesterday. So we'll play that. And then immediately after that, we'll adjourn for morning tea for about fifteen minutes.
All right. Thank you again, Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Flavell for coming to the commission and giving us evidence and providing us with assistance on the important policy issues that we confront. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
So William, can I start by asking you a little bit about your story? What about your life and how you've come to be part of the community here at Newtown? What would you like to tell us about your life?
This Newtown Neighbourhood Centre has a lot of diverse service providers that help out, including providing a bit of food as well to people who are living in the sort of, the, let's say, the people who have less money as well as who are a bit of a struggle to live in Sydney, Australia.
Have you had a bit of a struggle?
Yeah, you can say I had been a struggle because previously I was, before living in social housing, I was living in the boarding house. So this boarding house was around the inner west. So it's quite close to Newtown, but I didn't know of this service that existed in Newtown.
How did you come to be living at the boarding house?
The boarding house was a place that was not really much rental properties as well as, yeah, I had trouble basically to find suitable accommodation and affordable accommodation in Sydney. As well as you want to be living independently, to look after yourself independently. Try not to live with friends too much, but they can help out.
So with it, when you were living in the boarding house, how long did you live in the boarding house?
Boarding house, I first lived in the boarding house for a few years, more than two years in the same boarding house. I was in Lykka. The first boarding house was introduced by me by a friend who lived in the inner west of Sydney. And it was a boarding house that existed previously. It wasn't renovated quite recently at that time.
And when you were living at the boarding house, did you have a job?
No, I wasn't working in full-time capacity. But sometimes I had some jobs which were contract jobs, like in information technology, IT, that involved project work and that involved, let's say, putting out laptops, bagging laptops as well as loading software onto the laptops.
And before you were living in the boarding house, what were your circumstances?
In the circumstance before finding that boarding house, because it was a bit difficult to afford a place as well as finding income to support myself. And that was a really challenging bits of life that you felt that you couldn't, you had to give up a lot of stuff and you had to give up the place that you want to live. And there was some times that you had nobody to go to and no place to go to. So you can say that during, when I lived in the boarding house and when I moved to another boarding house in the inner west, obviously I was involved in or attended appointments, appointments with a disability employment services.
You did?
Yes, yes, yes. So that was at that phase in life that you attended appointments, that you felt that that could help you find a job. And you could basically be helped out in a humane way, not in a intimidating way or a wrongful way. But sometimes you felt there was a bit of change in what they do in the sort of helping out. The DES providers were changing their location, people were moving about, and you felt you couldn't cope, basically.
So that when the DES, when you're working with the DES providers, they would have just been looking at your employment options, not the rest of your life?
They sort of, yeah. They were sort of, they were target-driven, sort of. They wanted you into a sort of a charity-based job, a door-to-door charity-based job. There wasn't that much support around it. You were going out by yourself. You didn't really talk to the employers that much, over the phone, but not face to face. And the DES provider were just pushing that job over and over again.
Was it a job you wanted to do?
No, no, no.
At that time, so if you were looking for a job with the DES provider, what supports did you need to find out the right job for you?
What science? Yeah.
Did you need anything?
Not really. But obviously, it has to be sometimes in the interest of what you're doing, like in IT. If it was a charity work, it was out of the scope, out of the interest of what you've done previously.
Can I ask you about sort of attitudes towards people with disability?
Attitudes?
Have you thought about that?
Maybe it's, even if you have to, let's say, in the second boarding house, they didn't really know if you were disabled. It was just sort of more intimidating way. It felt that you were a bit targeted in terms of, so there were slipping notes under your door in the second boarding house. But in the first boarding house, they weren't doing that too much. And in terms of attitudes, I think that there was any definition of what an attitude is to a disabled person or a person who would seeing counsel or something like that. There's no, there is no sort of, if there was a job provider that say you have to be on DES, you said, you're fine, you're fine, but they still want to be, they still want to force you into DES because there's that sort of, sort of, sort of a forced, like a forced hand onto you. They want to keep you in that DES provider or something like that. They know you're still, they write things about you, you have a health plan. They could write things about you about a health plan. But it's sort of, sort of half, there's a half truth to it that you want to escape, but you can't, something like that.
So you don't have a DES provider?
No, I don't have a DES. I've escaped that DES, back onto the normal mainstream providers.
Okay, so back to the mainstream providers.
Yeah.
Have you got any thoughts or ideas that you'd like to tell the Royal Commission about what might make the lives of people with disability, particularly where they live and the type of housing available to them, what would make things better?
Maybe it was a bit of a long, hard journey. You can say you had to go through a lot of processes that you have to go through. You have to get your doctor to fill out some information in regards to your application to social housing. Maybe.
What would it make it easier for you?
Easier. Maybe if there was some more jobs available for disabled people, maybe. But even that, you can say there wasn't that much affordable housing. Or there's limited amount of stock of affordable housing as well as paying that much for affordable housing that you had to go into social housing.
Now, is there anything else that you wanted to talk about today that I haven't asked you about that you wanted to discuss with us?
Yeah. So during the time in the second boarding house, the second boarding house had a caretaker. The caretaker took the rent as well as introducing the property, go inside the property with you to introduce the room, as well as to look after the entire boarding house, something like that. So the person actually knocked on the door a few times as well as slipping notes under the door as well as sort of intimidating, that we're complaining about what you had inside the room. If the room smelt a bit, that was natural because it hasn't been rented out for a time being. And they said, you have to clear this smell out. And the smell was something that it could be done only if there was somebody living inside. So it's sort of intimidating as well as being half abusive in terms of how we're treating the people who lived. Maybe it was targeted towards me, maybe some of.
Could you do anything about that? Like, you know, who do you go to talk to about that?
No, I couldn't talk to them. You have to find out what's causing the problem. Eventually, that you had to move out, basically. You had to move out because you just couldn't take the sort of, the way that the caretaker was treating you as well as not treating other people fairly or unfairly. That's the sort of, you felt that you were unfairly targeted, basically.
And is it, it's better now?
Yeah, it's much better now with the housing, with the room size as well as you have your own facilities. You have laundry and whatever, facilities by yourself. You don't have to share the place. And you're not intimidated by that caretaker, basically.
Commissioners, that's William who we met along the way and he wanted to share his story with you. So thank you for the opportunity to share that and to listen to that. Could we adjourn maybe for fifteen minutes?
Yes. Well, it's now eleven twenty-five. Shall we adjourn till eleven forty-five? Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mrs. Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. So welcome, Ms. Zoe Dendall. And Zoe Dendall is the Acting Executive Director of Housing Homelessness Disability New South Wales as part of the New South Wales Department of Communities and Justice. There's a copy of her statement in the hearing bundle, which is part two, volume one, behind tab sixteen. And I think we've first got to do I saw affirmations. Is that right?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Dendall, for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. Thank you for your statement, which we have, and we have read all forty-six pages of it. Just so you know where everybody is, Commissioner Galbely is on screen. She is joining the hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner Ryan is on my left and I'm the Chair of the Royal Commission. And if you'd be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who is over there, he will administer the affirmation to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes, or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and defer that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll now ask Ms. Eastman to ask you some questions.
Ms. Dendall, you've provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the fifth of August this year. I might need you to do a bit more than just nod your head so we can hear you.
I have.
And there's been some corrections that you wanted to make to the statement.
There has, thank you.
And you provided us a supplementary document setting out those corrections.
We have.
And there was one further correction, I think, to paragraph twenty-nine, right? It came in, sorry, twenty-six, that was brought to the Royal Commission's attention on Monday. So can I just deal with that correction? So Commissioners, it's page six, paragraph twenty-six. It's the second line and it's the figure. So we delete sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one and replace that with eleven thousand twenty-two. Right?
Okay.
So together with that correction and the corrections that you provided to us on the twenty-fifth of August, are the contents of the statement true and correct?
They are, thank you.
Can I just indicate that paragraph twenty should also be amended in the same way as twenty-six?
Right.
It also states the sixteen point one, which would be eleven oh two-two.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Vanessa. I only had the reference to paragraph twenty-six. All right. So with just that correction to the numbers, the contents are true and correct.
Correct.
All right. Now, it's a case, isn't it, that this statement was prepared with some assistance across the department and from other officers. Is that right?
That is correct. The statement's reflective of both the department and other New South Wales agencies.
And even though this is your statement, some of the content in terms of the technical aspects and the operational aspects are not part of the areas that you have direct responsibility for. Is that right?
That is correct.
And the Crown solicitor offered to provide two additional people to give evidence with you as part of a panel. Is that right?
That is right.
And you will tell me if there are areas in your statement where you don't feel equipped to answer or it's not within your particular area of expertise or experience. Is that right?
I will.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I want to start with the statement. You are the Acting Executive Director in the area of Housing Homelessness and Disability. And this is a position that you've held since the twenty-seventh of September twenty twenty-one. And just to understand a little bit about your role and responsibilities, your current role requires you to lead the commissioning of Housing, Homelessness, Disability and Other Related Services, including policy settings, working with the Commonwealth and other states and territories, program design and implementation assistance stewardship.
That's correct.
Can you tell me, does that mean that you? Now, can you tell me, does that mean that you work to the National Agreement?
Uh, we do work to the overarching National Housing and Homelessness Agreement.
And were you present when Ms Mitchell and Mr Flavell gave their evidence earlier today?
I was.
Right. Now, um, the, I want you to look at paragraph eight of your statement. And as I understand it, this takes it from your particular functions into what the department's main focus is. Working with the community and non-government partners and other agencies. And so you've identified there a number of different cohorts, can I describe it that way? So you're looking at improving outcomes for vulnerable children and young people. But people with disability is identified as a particular area. In terms of that area, what is the department's main fo- focus? In working with community, non-government partners and other agencies to improve outcomes for people with disability?
Uh, so there's a, there's a range of different aspects across the department that work with people with disability. So with the transition of services to the National Disability Insurance Scheme, uh, the department's no longer a delivery of service.
I just ask you to slow down, just so the interpreters can keep, um, up with you. And also that I can make sure that I don't miss anything you tell me. Thanks.
Uh, so when the department's no longer a delivery of service for people with disability. That, that transition to the National Disability Insurance Scheme. But we still have interfaces with the Commonwealth and other states and territories from a disability policy setting. We also work to principles of disability inclusion across all portfolios of the department. To ensure that people with a disability are captured across all programs. And in disability, uh, in the housing operations arms, there's also, uh, the focus there for people with a disability. For when housing operations staff are supporting clients.
The department no longer has any role in what might be described as being a case manager for a particular person with disability, is that right?
That is correct.
Alright. Now, uh, again, looking at your statement, you, you've provided some context. Before you answer some of the questions that the Royal Commission, um, asked you and the department to address. And under context, you say the New South Wales Government's mainstream service delivery agencies. Are required to make their services accessible and to make reasonable adjustments to services where needed. Now, what's the source of this? Does this come out of a policy? Is it a legislative requirement? What's the source of this statement?
Uh, it's a, it's a guiding principle that we work by in the department.
Right, and what, um, does it mean to say that the services must be accessible?
Uh, so it's, uh, linking to the, the convention on the rights of persons with disabilities. It's where all services, uh, for the general population should also be available for, for everybody on an equal basis.
Right, and I don't think in your statement there is any reference to the Convention on Persons with Disabilities. So how does that convention and the rights in the convention apply to the work? Of the New South Wales Government mainstream service delivery agencies?
So all policies that are developed or programs or, or products that are available for people. Uh, are focused for people who are vulnerable and that encompasses people with disability.
So the convention, that you're familiar with the convention at all?
I am.
So the convention sets out a range of different rights in different areas, you're aware of that?
Yes.
And some overarching principles?
General themes.
And, um, in terms of looking at the particular sets of rights. Does the New South Wales Government have a process by which it takes a particular right in the CRPD? And applies it in the development of policy or the making of laws? Do you know about that?
Can't comment on, on direct, uh, references necessarily to the conventions in, in policies or documents. I'd need to take that on notice for specific referencing documents. But, uh, definitely there is the principle of disability inclusion. Uh, so as a government department, we are required to have a disability inclusion action plan. Uh, so there is that principle that's applied.
So if there's a disability inclusion access plan, then that plan has got to, to meet the rights set out in the CRPD?
Uh, again, I, I'm not sure if it's a direct reference to the convention itself in, in, in the document. Rather than the, the general themes and principles that the convention stands for.
Okay, and the other one that you've got here is to make reasonable adjustments to services where needed, alright. Now, the statement, the statement does actually have a fair bit on reasonable adjustments. Now, if this is an area you're not familiar with, let me know, but if you can turn to page eighteen, paragraph seventy-nine. You tell us that rea- that the responsibility to provide reasonable adjustment arises under the Disability Discrimination Act. And applies to all accommodation providers. Um, I just wanna be clear, are you saying that, um, there that the obligation on reasonable adjustments? Only applies to accommodation providers? Does this extend to New South Wales Government as well?
Uh, so this reference is specific into the question around, uh, housing and community infrastructure. So it has been answered in response to accommodation providers in this instance.
But when going to your statement on context where you refer to making reasonable adjustments. Does that word or the expression reasonable adjustments have the meaning by reference to the Disability Discrimination Act or something else?
Uh, not, uh, not a direct link, but again, i- implied principles.
Well, just perhaps while we're on this bit, and I know this is a, an area that colleagues have got the particular expertise on. But I assume that you're familiar with the concept of reasonable adjustments.
Right.
And, um, and this is an example, isn't it, in terms of home modifications to how reasonable adjustments might work in practice?
That's correct.
And the purpose of a reasonable adjustment is what in your understanding?
Uh, so, so my understanding is that a rea- reasonable adjustment may come in the form of either a, a minor reasonable adjustment. Or modification or a major modification.
Okay, so it, would a reasonable adjustment be something that, uh, for example, the department? Or an accommodation provider would have to do if a person with disability required some change? Or some different way in which the services might need to be provided, is that right?
It would, so, uh, my understanding is if it was a minor reasonable adjustment, it would be the responsibility of the provider. So in the instance of public housing, that would be the Land and Housing Corporation. Or in the instance of community housing, if that asset was owned by a community housing provider. It would be the responsibility of a community housing provider.
And in terms of the Land and Housing Corporation and its obligations. I think the statement says that the corporation meets the funding obligation to give effect to reasonable adjustments. Not the department, is that right?
That, that is my understanding where it's a minor modification. If it's a major reasonable adjustment that's required, that is where the NDIS funding would, would come into it.
Okay, I know, I wanna ask you about the differences between minor and major, but just looking at this, we're gonna look at paragraph eighty. So it's the corporation's responsibility to do the funding. And the department's role is to communicate with the tenants around their tenancy. So if I'm a, a person who is in housing, um, public housing owned by the corporation. And I need to have an adjustment to my housing arrangements. It would be the department who would communicate with me as part of my tenancy about what adjustments I could ask for, is that right?
That's correct. So the Land and Housing Corporation only own the land, the asset, and the department are the tenancy managers.
So in terms of sort of understanding how this idea of minor and modification. Minor modifications and major modifications work. Is it the department's role to give information to the tenants about what is a minor modification? And what might be something considered to be, uh, more substantial and a major modification?
That is my understanding and that would be through the form of an occupational therapist assessment.
And why do people need to have an occupational therapist assessment for either a minor or a major, um, modification?
Uh, so that is the requirement under the, the modifications, that there'd need to be an allied health professional. So in, in this instance, an occupational therapist to assess what modifications would be required.
Right, but what's the reason for having an OT report or assessment?
I'd have to take that on notice, this is an operational consideration.
The statement sort of very helpfully sets out what might be a mo- minor modification. So they could be things as, and this is in the table Commissioners on page nineteen. They could be things like adjusting where the letterbox is, relocating the bin area. Could be installing a doorbell or a button, uh, it could be adjustments to the handles. It could be adjustments to kitchen cupboards, and I'm just taking a few examples, relocating powerpoints, things like that. So these, would you agree they seem to be sort of small modifications to what's already existing? Either externally or internally in a dwelling, is that right?
That's my understanding.
But you've still gotta have an OT report to say, I think I need the doorbell button to be a little bit lower or higher.
As I understand it, I do believe that there are some circumstances where an occupational therapist. Report is not required when, when it's deemed a, a minor modification.
Okay, but, um, and in terms of, uh, an occupational therapist report. Does the corporation or the department have an in-house, uh, group of occupational therapists? Who can go and assist tenants with disability to identify what modifications need to be made?
Do, in, in acknowledgement of the need for, for more occupational therapists to assist. With, with social housing applications and home modification applications. The department invested two, two million dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two. And again, this financial year for additional occupational therapists, for DCJ housing staff to have access to. To assist with a home modification process.
That's a relatively recent thing to have the in-house OT.
Uh, so in, in terms of the increase, but that is my understanding that that came into effect last financial year. In, in recommendation, in response to one of the recommendations in the ombudsman report.
Alright, so minor modifications, they're the sorts of things that we've just looked at. And, uh, i- in terms of meeting that cost, is there any policy about how much would be spent on a minor modification? Do you know that?
I'm not aware of that, I'd need to take that on notice.
Then there's also a category of major modifications and they're described as highly tailored to individual requirements. And the statement, this is paragraph eighty-six, says, a result in modifications beyond the reasonable adjustments responsibility. Of a social housing provider, right, I wanna ask you about that. So in terms of using the Disability Discrimination Act. A reasonable adjustment is any adjustment up to the point it imposes unjustifiable hardship. On the person to make the adjustment, you're aware of that? And are you aware of what the elements are that go into working out what an unjustifiable hardship is?
No, not in detail.
But, um, accept this proposition that unjustifiable hardship is not just limited to the cost of the adjustment. Can be a range of other factors as well, you're aware of that?
Yeah, I would accept that.
And in terms of, um, the minor modifications, and we just look at the examples in the table. You'd agree with me that none of the making of adjustments of that kind would impose an unjustifiable hardship on. The state of New South Wales or the, um, Land and Housing Corporation, would it?
Uh, so the, the provider, so in this instance for public housing, the, the Land and Housing Corporation would be funding these minor modifications.
Now, when it, we talk about major modifications, I'm not quite sure on what basis. You could say a major modification is beyond reasonable adjustment responsibilities of, of a social housing provider. Are you saying there that the very nature of a major modification would impose unjustifiable hardship on a social housing provider?
My, my understanding is that, uh, the major modification comes into effect. As identified by the NDIS reasonable and necessary definition.
For somebody, like, assume there's somebody who is in, um, social housing in New South Wales. And they have a disability, but they're not an NDIS provider, uh, uh, NDIS participant. And they may need a modification to their house. Say if they've got a mobility disability in terms of perhaps widening the doorways or, um, making adjustments to bathrooms. And they might need to be tailored to that person particularly. Are we right in understanding that the policy approach is that those sorts of adjustments would not be made? If it costs too much?
No, that's not correct. So, uh, again, my understanding is that Land and Housing Corporation do assess on a case by cases. Major modifications where required for non-NDIS participants.
And, and that would be a New South Wales responsibility?
That's my understanding.
And is it the view that if the person is an NDIS participant? Then the funding for any major modification should be with the NDIS funding arrangements in that particular person's plan, is that right?
Uh, that is my understanding. I, I will just, uh, say though that the, this, uh, part of the statement. Does fall under the remit of Land and Housing Corporation and our housing operations, so that there are some things I'll need to take on notice.
I accept the limits on this, um, but I just, it's really to use this as an example on how. You approach reasonable adjustments in services that are needed, okay? So would you agree with me that this seems to think about adjustments only through the perspective of how much it's going to cost?
From the home modifications perspective a- around accommodation in this instance, yes.
And, uh, has the, do you know if the corporation or government generally has put a ceiling? On how much will be spent on making adjustments for people with disability in their dwellings?
Not that I'm aware of, I'd need to take that on notice.
Now, there's also something that works with the Disability Discrimination Act called the Disability Access to Premises and Buildings Standards twenty-two, twenty-ten. Are you familiar with that?
No, not really.
Not really? Okay, so that might be something your colleagues know about. Alright, so when we asked you to provide a statement, uh, we did ask you some questions just to get a sense of the prevalence of. People with disability who are homeless or at risk of homelessness in New South Wales. So you, um, um, we've done that by reference to people who might be applicants on the New South Wales Housing Register. So if you wanna have a look at your statement, this is back to paragraph nineteen on page four. So in terms of the New South Wales Housing Register, just tell me if my understanding's correct. That if somebody, uh, is seeking accommodation or a dwelling through social housing in New South Wales. They have to make an application?
There's, yeah, i- in New South Wales, there is what's called a Housing Pathways Application Process. For somebody to put in a housing application to go on the Social Housing Register.
Okay, and there's, um, a range of criteria that you have to satisfy or eligibility criteria that you have to satisfy. And Commissioners, a copy of the eligibility criteria policy is behind tab nineteen, starting at page three in the, um, bundle. I won't take you to that to stand or just given time. Um, but the policy, uh, would the policy be the first place that somebody who might want to. Apply for housing should go to work out if they're eligible or not?
That the, yes, the housing policy would state the criteria.
Okay, and in terms of just assisting us, for people with disability. Is the fact of having a disability enough to meet the eligibility criteria or does it have to be something more?
Uh, so predominantly people with a disability would generally meet the criteria for the priority housing white list. So to meet the criteria for the priority housing white list, you meet the criteria for the, for the general white list. And then there's also an additional four criteria that, that you can meet. And in most instances, people with a disability, uh, do meet the criteria of the existing accommodation is inappropriate. So basic requirements, that's not to say that they wouldn't fit one or the other criteria, often they would fit, fit many of, of the four. But, uh, in most instances, they, they always fit that criteria for the priority waitlist.
Right, and then looking at the information that you've provided to the Royal Commission. Is, uh, in terms of the number of applicants on the housing register at the present time, there's almost fifty thousand people, is that right? Well, that's for the twenty twenty twenty-one period, that's correct. And, um, we have asked you about how do you collect information that might identify a person living with disability? And you've told us that you do collect that information. And about twenty-two percent of the people who are currently on the housing register identify as people with disability. Is that right?
It has defined by the disability support.
That is the next thing, so the thing with, with that definition is it's not just any type of disability, is it? Is that you define disability for the purpose of, of, uh, the register as. a person who uh is on the disability support pension. And that's the main source of income to the household head. So uh would I be right in understanding if you apply that approach to identifying disability? Being on the D S P and being the person who's the household head on the D S P, that that's not necessarily going to pick up everybody who may identify as a person with disability for the purposes of register, is that right?
Uh that's correct. So that picks up what we call the household head. There is also data collected on the number of people who may be in the household with disability. That that number is often quoted as a number or more, and by or more, that means that there may be some people in the household that's not picked up through the disability support pension. So if they are on an aged care pension, if they're a small child, for example.
And for the twenty two percent of people who um you treat as people with disability, are all of those people identified as a priority, as priority applicants?
No, they're not.
Why not?
I'd have to take that on notice.
And um in terms of then um some of the um data that you've provided us in the waiting list, can I ask you about that? Is that the process of the waiting list may depend on, just tell me if I'm right on this, when you apply, so where you are in the queue. But it might also um apply in a priority setting where you might sort of go up the list and not be waiting in the queue, is that right?
Yeah, so it also depends on uh the availability of supply, location, uh accessibility and if it's suitable for the person on the waitlist. So you're correct in saying, just hypothetically, if you're first on on the priority waitlist doesn't necessarily mean that you will get access to a property first, it is around the suitability for each individual.
So you can, a person can actually go online and say, I live at Parramatta, or I want to live at Parramatta. Here's my particular circumstances, is that that location of living in Parramatta or that particular local government area that might have a bearing on the housing stock available in that area. And if that's your preference to live in that area, that might depend on how long you are on the waiting list, is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so across New South Wales, there's going to be real differences in where people are seeking social housing, is that right?
Correct, there's differences across the state.
So are you able to help us with some of the numbers that are provided in the statement? So this is page nine, paragraph thirty six. Because we asked you about some waiting times. And we've heard some people telling us that they've been on the housing uh list for a long time, and I don't know if you were following the evidence yesterday, but Claudia, who's a young person, said she thought she joined the housing list in twenty sixteen, for example. And she's now twenty five, but she's not sure where she is or what might happen to her. And I'm not asking you to talk about her circumstances. Or we heard from Charlotte at the beginning of the hearing about dropping off the waiting list. So um assume that that there's, there has to be something, doesn't there, that the person remains on the waiting list? Do they have to do something?
Uh not unless their circumstance changes and and they wish to update that their circumstance.
So they have to identify if there might be some changes in what the accessibility might be if they're an applicant with disability. Whether they need steps or they don't need steps or whatever it might be.
That's correct. So the uh suitability assessment is based on the original housing application. And if if somebody does need to change what that information is, then that would be taken into consideration for for it.
Right, so looking at the tables here, so the median waiting time for newly housed in public housing is reported as two and a half months in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and two and a half months in twenty 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 one. That seems to be quite quick, two and a half months. What is it about a person who um would um have that priority flag on the waiting list that would enable them as I assume this is sort of average across all the locations to be housed within two point two months?
So again, it would be around the availability of of the supply in in that area and also the suitability for for the applicant.
Okay, and um you haven't got, I think, any further data to say of the priority list of people with disability? Either coming out of homelessness or at risk of homelessness, whether for that that group, the priority would also be two point two months.
Uh I can take that on notice to to drill down to that data.
Right, so pri- so priority might be that you're in relatively quickly, two and a half months. And I say relatively quickly because table four sets out the maximum waiting time for newly housed public housing. And for the period twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, that's one hundred and seventy six point three months. And that's now gone up in twenty twenty to twenty twenty one as a hundred and eighty point eight months. So my rough calculation is that's about fifteen years. And that's a long time. What's the reason why it is so long for somebody who um has applied for housing? Can I ask you about that? Would these have been people who applied fifteen years ago? Or are these people who are applying now? And if you've applied at recent times, your expectation might be that you'll have to wait for fifteen years.
Uh so again, it comes uh down to the availability of of supply and the suitability. So uh suitability of of uh public uh social housing, community housing has has really changed in in previous years as well. So a lot of um your older, older housing accommodation might look like is more your three to four bedroom homes where people uh now may be looking more for a one to two bedroom, for example. So predominantly on the on the waiting list, there is more people that are wanting a different type of accommodation than some of the older housing stock enables. So that's one of the factors. And then it also comes down to supply in geography and suitability for the applicant.
Right, and we heard yesterday uh about reasonable offers and Ms Morehouse spoke about her experiences. I'm not asking you to comment on her case specifically, but she talked about the two reasonable offers. And you've included in the material for the Royal Commission, commission, this is behind tab twenty, uh a policy called matching an offering of property to a client policy. Is that something you're familiar with?
Uh that is an operational document.
And that says generally a client will receive up to two reasonable offers of housing from their preferred so- social housing provider. This means that where a client selects public housing and community housing as their preferred provider, they may receive offers from the department and any community housing providers participating. So that's the way, that's where the two offers come from, is that right? So if a person uh has two offers and that they have rejected both offers, what happens to them?
My understanding is that the the two offers are made on the original housing application. So it can be that if the person needs to update their their circumstance and details, that that can can be done. And I also understand that there is a process where somebody can put in in appeal if they feel that their offer has been rejected on unfair grounds.
Right, well, I I take it that um this is not a policy that you're responsible for, or it is?
But no, this sits as an operational matter.
And uh when we've looked at the policy, there's sort of nothing in there that speaks to the experience of people with disability and whether or not the a reason for rejecting an offer might be that it's just not accessible to suit disability. It does do that in terms of a reasonable offer on page one and the third dot point. Getting to that. Accessibility. So uh the policy does not, um let me put it this way, the policy does not provide that for people with disability, that the two reasonable office office offers are not relevant to people with disability. So people with disability are treated in the group for whom two reasonable offices offers might be made. If they reject the reasonable offers, as you say, they'll have appeal processes. But there's nothing specific for people with disability in relation to the number of offers.
Uh again, my understanding is that the offers are made based on the housing application's individual needs. So that would include accessibility. So uh an offer should only be deemed as reasonable if it took into consideration the accessibility requirements for that individual or household.
And one of the um, again, if you don't know this, tell me. In the policy, there's a range of references to legislation and compliance, and one includes the New South Wales Antidiscrimination Act, and the other includes the Disability Discrimination Act. You're aware of that?
I'm I'm not familiar with the policy that you're referring to.
And this policy doesn't have um any provision for making reasonable adjustments or explain how reasonable adjustments under the Disability Discrimination Act works. Are you aware of that?
I was not, thank you.
So now I want to ask you about the New South Wales Strategy, which the New South Wales Homelessness Strategy twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three. Is this a policy you're aware of?
I am.
So this is in your area. So um is this homelessness strategy a policy developed to meet the National Housing and Home, National Homelessness Housing Strategy that I was asking Mr Faville about this morning?
So it it's uh uh as um mentioned in the D S S session earlier today, there are some some requirements under the National Housing and Homelessness Agreement for states and territories to have our strategies, but there's nothing that's sort of mandated as such within those strategies. So we've developed a New South Wales Homelessness Strategy twenty eighteen to to twenty twenty three, um which uh based on the dates, as you be aware, will be coming to a close June next year. So we will actually be going out for consultation early twenty twenty three to look at the next iteration of that strategy.
And um were you involved in the development of this strategy?
I was not, that was before my time.
Right, but it's part of your responsibilities now in terms of actions on the strategy, all right. So I've looked at the strategy and um and I'm going to put these general propositions to you. That the strategy itself does not identify people with disability as a separate cohort. Agree with that?
Uh so the strategy itself is for people with four vulnerable abilities, which encompasses people with disability. And throughout the document, there are references to people with a disability, uh people with mental health, people with mental illness.
Yeah, so if you've got that, if you've got the strategy and commissions, if you have it on page nine, so this is behind tab twenty in the volume, that there's a heading called disability, but it says the National Disability Insurance Scheme, N D I S, provides all Australians under the age of sixty five who have permanent and significant disability with a reasonable and necessary support if they need to enjoy an ordinary life. The N D I S provides an unprecedented op- unprecedented opportunity for people with disability to live more independently in their housing of choice and the services they need. So that's that's it on a description of disability. So you're aware, aren't you, that not all people with disability are N D I S participants?
That that's correct. And I'll also just uh reference that when the the strategy was developed, it was sort of pre pre N D I S. So we've obviously uh uh a lot of lessons learned um since the N D I S has come into effect and absolutely correct that uh the N D I S doesn't take into account all people with disability. So the next iteration of the homelessness strategy will absolutely be more reflective of that.
Because one of the uh aspects of this policy was to assist New South Wales to understand the prevalence and the impact of homelessness, is that right? And so that's set up in uh page nine and following. There's not a separate heading for disability in relation to those issues. But on page ten, there is a reference to people with mental health issues.
That's correct. Uh so there's uh the reference on page ten, there's uh also further reference uh on page fourteen.
There's one on page ten also to people experiencing chronic homelessness and sleeping rough. So there's a reference to a person who has disability support needs. There's also a reference in regional and rural areas that access to disability services could be constrained in those areas. So I think it's fair to say, isn't it, that there's a few references to disability throughout the documents. But there isn't actually a definition of disability uh used in this document, is that right?
Uh that would be correct.
So if we go to the glossary at the end, there's no definition or description of what disability means for the purpose of um this strategy. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And one of the difficulties, of course, isn't it, that if you don't have clear definition of, say, disability, that it's pretty hard to work out how this policy is actually going to apply to people with disability. They can have shades of meaning, can't they?
Correct, because we obviously refer to to people with vulnerabilities, which encompasses people with disability, which can come in many forms, physical, mental health, mental illness. So it can be used uh interchangeably when we refer in the strategy to people with mental health.
Yeah, so some people with disability might say, well, having a disability doesn't make me vulnerable, but the circumstances in which I find myself create that vulnerability. And that being aware of disability is important to understand when and how the context might render somebody vulnerable. You agree with that?
I do.
And the, this policy also uh fo- has a couple of focus areas, one's prevention and early intervention. And looking at that um approach, there's no discussion of disability in terms of prevention and early intervention if you're at those areas. You're aware of that?
Again, because the the strategies focused on people who are vulnerable, which encompasses people with disability.
And uh again, if we went through uh this, one of the focus areas is focus area three, an integrated person-centered service stream, that's on page twenty five. And that does identify four percent of people reported having a disability in the cohort of people who access the specialist homeless services, do you see that?
I do.
So would would you agree that there was clearly some evidence in the preparation of this policy that there were housing and um needs for people with disability who were experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness? Would you accept that?
I would, and I I understand that as part of the consultation process for the strategy, um it included people with lived experience and also some disability peak bodies.
And this um strategy has been reviewed by the New South Wales Auditor General, is that right?
It is.
And you provided a copy of the Auditor General's report dated the fourth of June, and commissioners, you'll find that behind tab twenty two. Um Ms Dendel, has the uh work done by the Auditor General been a factor that has been taken into account in any plans to develop a new and revised strategy?
A- absolutely. Uh so um as as I mentioned, we'll be going out for consultation for the next iteration of the homelessness strategy in early twenty twenty three. And it will take into consideration a a number of things. Uh so evaluations from some of the current early intervention and prevention initiatives funded under the strategy, uh recommendations and findings from the audit report, uh recommendations fr- from the commission. So we'll absolutely be taking all of those things into consideration.
And I think you've very kindly and very tightly provided us a report from the New South Wales Ombudsman, which um looked at modifying public housing properties to meet the needs of tenants with disability. And this was a process identified through complaints to the Ombudsman. Are you familiar with that document?
I'm familiar with the document, um but the the accountability for the uh recommendations does sit with Land and Housing Corporation and the operations arm of the department.
Well, some of the recommendations, you'd agree, from the Ombudsman's report would touch on some broader general policy as well. You agree with that?
Yes, I do.
And uh some of the issues are around delay, poor communication, inadequate complaint handling processes. Those would be all things that would be within the department's interest, is that right? And the uh Ombudsman made a number of recommendations in uh the, in his report. Are you familiar with those recommendations?
Um.
There are Ombudsman's reports behind tab twenty seven. There are Ombudsman's reports behind tab twenty seven. Oh, page fifty in that report. I want to ask you about any particular recommendation in any detail, but I want to put this proposition to you that many of these recommendations go to the manner in which a person is treated with their engagement with the social housing system. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would.
And Ms. Morehouse raised yesterday this sort of sense of having to engage with the system or the application processes. As she said, some people are lovely, but some people she engaged with, she just had this feeling that, she said she felt like she was treated like a criminal. But in terms of a person centred approach, which I know you've talked about, how do you ensure that anybody engaging with a person with disability through their systems or processes is equipped to understand the experiences of people with disability and also have effective communication with people with disability? Is there anything that, that the department does and bearing in mind these recommendations could do better?
Yeah, absolutely. So there is training for departmental housing staff in supporting people with a disability. So there is internal training and resources. There's a support resource page on the internal departmental website that's available for staff. Obviously noting it's not just departmental staff that support people with a disability. It's also our funded providers. So the department funds community housing providers and specialist homelessness services, for example, to, to work with our vulnerable cohorts, including people with a disability. And an example of a resource there that's available for specialist homelessness services is there's what's called practice guidelines for specialist homelessness services. And there's a module in that for, for working with people with disability and interfaces with the NDIS.
Does the department keep any data of the number of people who've undertaken any training modules?
I can definitely take that on notice from a learning and development perspective. There, there should be data available.
All right. So a little bit earlier, we talked about the role of the NDIS. And from a New South Wales perspective, how does New South Wales approach the distinction between what's NDIS's responsibility and what's New South Wales's responsibility? We've just, we've talked about that a little earlier in the context of making major modifications to, to somebody's dwelling. But generally, is there a particular policy setting that sets out the what's NDIS and what's New South Wales?
I'm not familiar with one coverall document, so I'd have to take that on notice. But there, there's a, a range of information available. So there's, there's the, the actos that has principles included. And then I think there's a range of different ways that the department works with the, the NDIA for people who have NDIS support plans. So a few examples is New South Wales do contribute funding for specialist disability accommodation and supported independent living. For people who may be accessing specialist homelessness services or properties managed by community housing providers, workers would work closely with local area coordinators or the NDIS support worker for somebody if they're on an NDIS plan and living in, in a refuge, for, for example, or a property managed by community housing providers. The department also has a team that's dedicated to working with the NDIA for children in out of home care. So there's a lot of different touch points with the, with the NDIA.
If someone slips between the cracks, do you, do you see New South Wales department being the, the place of last resort?
The, well, so the intention of the, the NDIS in its establishment was that the, the department wouldn't be a provider of last resort.
The department would be?
Wouldn't.
Would not be?
No.
So the expectation is, and when I say last resort, let's take, for example, somebody who is homeless or is right on that precipice of becoming homeless. If New South Wales and the department are not the last resort, then who, who is?
Yeah. I think it's probably important to remember as well that the department, because we don't provide frontline service delivery for people with disabilities, so that the eighteen, what was formerly ADAC that would provide case management, no longer exists with the transition to the NDIS, but we do fund NGOs. So again, specialist homelessness services, for any example. So they absolutely, they operate a no wrong door principle. So if anyone approaches a service for support, they are supported into accommodation or case management or whatever support's required or referred on to find that support. So absolutely, that, that would apply.
All right. So I want to ask you about a few more questions on this topic, but perhaps draw your attention to the questions we asked you. For question twenty one, this is page thirty four of the statement. And this is about DCJ working closely with the NDIA to plan and coordinate streamlined services. Do you remember that question?
Yes, page thirty four. I've got that.
And paragraph one hundred and seventy nine is part of the discussion around a task force, a tasking group, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So are we right in understanding that there's a couple of steps in this? First, that the disability reform ministers have prioritised work to improve the supply of affordable and appropriate mainstream housing and NDIS funded accommodation for people with disability. Is that right? That's paragraph one hundred and seventy six. Okay. And is it right to understand that that step of giving effect to the priority of mainstream housing, but also NDIS funded accommodation is the process that's then described in paragraph one hundred and seventy seven and following? So that's what started in February twenty twenty one with the meeting of the Deputy Department Heads. Is that right?
That's correct. And particularly with the new federal minister, Minister Shorten, coming into the role, housing is high on his, his agenda. So it's absolutely a focus of the discussions when the disability ministers from states and territories meet and the interfaces that it has with housing. So you picked it, paragraph one seventy nine. New South Wales has been tasked with leading what is called Tasking Group Two. So there's just a number of outcomes based work that's been focused on tasking groups. And one of the items under Tasking Group Two, which is looking at mainstream interfaces, is looking at accessible and affordable housing for people with a disability, whether it be social and affordable housing or in SDA. In terms of where that work is up to, the group met recently and will be commissioning a body to look at in the first instance, some, some, some good data on supply and demand and need for, for people with disability in housing.
Has any of that work of the tasking groups been published or is publicly available?
I will need to take that on notice.
The, and in particular, I'd be interested if the tasking group's proposed project plan for housing that's currently being worked through with all jurisdictions and the Commonwealth is a document that's been publicly available.
I don't think it's been publicly available, but I will take it on notice to see if we can share it with the commission.
And has the Tasking Group Two, which is a New South Wales one, had the involvement of people with disability as part of that consultation working group?
My understanding is part of the project plan absolutely is the, the intention. So the, the work for Tasking Group Two is very much in its early iteration. So although the, the whole program of work came from the Deputy Department Heads meeting in February twenty one, the work under Tasking Group Two is, is more recent. And there's been one, maybe two meetings to date to progress that work. And there'll be a whole lot of sub-working groups across agencies to keep, to keep that driving.
All right. So I'm going to ask the commissioners, they may have some questions. So my final topic is, and I'm not going to ask you about the detail of the National Construction Code or Building Code standards. I assume that's not your area. But you're aware, aren't you, that New South Wales is not signing up to the National Construction Code?
I am.
Will that have any bearing in terms of the work that you do in developing policy around housing and also the experiences of people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness?
So although New South Wales hasn't signed up to the National Construction Code to mandate silver standards, overwhelmingly, a large proportion of new builds in, in New South Wales do adhere to, to silver standards. So obviously, we believe in the principle of accessibility for, for everyone. So, so Landon Housing Corporation, as I understand it, there's a, a regulation guideline. I'd have to take on notice the, the name of, of the actual document, but it's from twenty twenty. And within that, it states that all of their new builds need to be silver standard. Within the department, we have some programs that we fund. One's called the Social and Affordable Housing Fund. And another is the Community Housing Innovation Fund. That's funding goes to community housing providers. And again, an overwhelmingly large proportion of their new builds are silver standard.
There's, I don't know if this is your area or either, but there's a document you've provided us called Housing Twenty Forty One. Are you familiar with that?
I, I'm familiar with it, but it's a Department of Planning document.
And is this a vision for housing for New South Wales into the next twenty years or so?
It is. So it's the overarching twenty year vision for housing for the next twenty years. It sets out again some high level principles. And then there'll be a, a range of work that will flow under that. So we currently have in New South Wales, the Future Directions Strategy, which is also coming to an end next year. And we're looking at the next iteration of what the fit direction, social and affordable housing strategy would look like. So the, the Housing Twenty Forty One is essentially the overarching principles.
And that makes reference to universal design and the importance of ensuring that all construction, particularly with social and community housing, is built in a way that is accessible for people with disability and also older people. Right?
That's correct.
Now, yesterday we had a panel. I don't know if you follow the panel.
I did.
And you're probably very familiar and may work with some of the members of the panel. But their message was that solving housing might be complex, but it's not impossible. And in terms of a New South Wales approach, what would it take to solve or at the very least improve the housing circumstances for people with disability who are homeless or at the risk of homelessness? What's your view about what needs to be done?
So in terms of current investment in New South Wales, so this financial year, the stronger communities cluster, which the Department of Community and Justice sits, is investing one point two billion dollars in housing and homelessness initiatives. In addition to that, there's the housing package with the Department of Planning, which is two point eight billion for this financial year that's looking at accelerating new supply, first owner, ownership grants, et cetera. So there's definitely the acknowledgement and of the increased need for social and affordable housing. I think the supply constraints is, is no surprises to, to anyone. And I think particularly with the, the last few years, with the extra pressure points from the pandemic and natural disasters as well. But that has also meant that there has been additional investment in, in the housing and homelessness sector. One of the things that the panel mentioned yesterday was the principles of housing first. So that essentially is whereby somebody would have access to rapid housing and then wrap around support, support in place. And in New South Wales, we've got some good examples of, of that in place. One of which is what we've, is called the Together Home Programme. And that, that came about in response to the pandemic to support rough sleepers into accommodation with wraparound supports. And the reason I mention this is I think it's a, it's a good example of how government can work alongside the sector. Our state government works alongside the sector and also the, the NDIA to support people with a disability. So there are packages as part of that program, which are called high needs packages. And currently forty percent of people accessing those are people with a disability.
So I mean, the Together Home Programme set out in the statement, commissioners, at paragraph one hundred and twenty six and following. And I think the Auditor General also comments on some aspects of that in her report as well. I suppose the question might be if it was possible for New South Wales to respond in a public health emergency to support people who were homeless, but also to help people who may have been on the risk of homelessness to stay in their accommodation, then, you know, it can be done quickly, can't it? That might be put.
With additional investment, there's always the opportunity to do more.
Right. Thank you. The commissions may have some questions for you.
Yes, thank you. I, I'll ask Commissioner Galvill whether she has any questions.
And thank you. I, I'd like to ask you about the Australian Disability Strategy and the outcome area, areas and the key system measures. So one of them is average wait times for social housing for people with disability. And, you know, just wondering about your progress. So do you have a strategy on that topic as a signatory to the strategy? Do you have a timeline on that? Do you have the baseline well on the way to being collected? So I'm interested in that one. There's another one, which is the number of social housing dwellings that meet livable housing standards. And that's not just new builds. That, that would include refurbishment of old builds, not as reasonable, not, not as reasonable adjustment, but as universal access. And I'd like to know your progress, your plan, your strategy plan, your progress and, you know, the future of those two outcome areas from the ADS.
Thanks, Commissioner. To your first question around the Australian Disability Strategy and the, the progress on the outcomes, I'll need to take that on notice. I'm, I'm not sure in terms of the, the tracking and reporting of that from a state level. But the work that is directly linked to the Australian Disability Strategy is the work that I mentioned earlier around Tasking Group Two and the work that we're doing that New South Wales is leading to look at housing for people with disability. So that is directly linked to the, the housing outcome that's referenced in the Australian Disability Strategy. To your second question around livability standards for existing properties, again, I'll need to take that on notice, just because the maintenance of properties does sit under the remit of Land and Housing Corporation. So I will need to take that on notice.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rawlins. Ms. Dendel, just a thing of clarification. Do you remember back when, in your statement and when you were speaking with council assisting, there was a discussion about what constituted a major and a minor, a, a, a minor adjustment? And there seems to be almost a working rule within the New South Wales Government that if it's a minor adjustment, it's their responsibility to pay for it. And if it's a major adjustment and the person is a participant in the NDIS, they're referred to the NDIS to get some sort of adjustment. What I was wondering is, have you, if that seems to be pretty much a working rule, is there a working arrangement been established between the New South Wales Government and the NDIA? So that an individual seeking an adjustment isn't sort of working between a jungle of bureaucracy of sort of working out, you know, for example, of, of having to go to you, be refused, go to the NDIS. They might refuse them and then they're in a rock and a hard place. Have you been able to establish a working relationship where it, there's a, an, an understanding that a person refused by you because it's a major work will be picked up pretty much automatically by the NDIS?
Thanks, Commissioner. So my understanding is that the work occurs at a local level between the DCJ Housing Operations and the local NDIS relevant officers. But I'll need to take that on, on notice because it is a matter for our operations arm.
Do you think it would be a good idea to, so that people don't have to go to a wrong door to, to establish that as a working relationship and publish that?
Yeah. So my understanding is that those relationships do exist. I just can't talk to the exact mechanics of it. So I need to take it on notice in terms of articulating what that looks like.
Thinking of the Ombudsman's report, based on complaints about seeking home modifications, there's some discussion about whether or not people need OT reports. Does it not seem reasonable to you that if a person fronts up to the Department of Housing and wants some sort of modification that would be pretty much solved by compliance with the National Construction Code? For example, a person in a wheelchair seeking to remove the hob from a shower or the shower screen, why on earth do they need an OT report to do something that is, you know, frankly bleeding obvious? Is there, is there really a need for people to have, I mean, I, I, I think this I mean, I I I think this does bug people that they have to constantly prove their disability over and over again and get paperwork for things that do appear to be bleedingly obvious. If I have a wheelchair, it's pretty obvious I'm going to need lower kitchen benches at least somewhere in the kitchen. I probably want a doorbell that's at a spot where I could use it, et cetera.
Uh, again, my understanding is that there are exceptions for some minor modifications where an O T assessment isn't required. Um and in response to the Ombuds' recommendations, there was a task force that was established between lack and the department to drive those recommendations. And as I understand, they're all either in trail um or have have been actioned. So I can take on notice as well to get an update on those actions.
Is there any chance of there being some guidelines which are published to the public so that people with disability would understand that these are circumstances in which I don't need an O T report because there's already a previous agreement between the Commonwealth and the state that a person with a wheelchair doesn't need to continually prove that they need accessible, inaccessible house?
Yep, I can absolutely take that on notice. There may be such a document that that already exists that's been developed by the um Operations Division. So I can take that on notice.
Um, can I take you to the part of your statement that I think it's to paragraph two twenty six, where you talk about um the regulation of boarding houses in New South Wales? And I couldn't help but notice that the number of visits and inspections being conducted to boarding house premises by the Department of uh Community Justice has declined by a factor of forty five percent over the last three years. Is there some explanation for that? And the reason that I ask is you'd be aware that the act itself was being reviewed. And among the proposals being considered in that review was pretty much handing over the um responsibility for regulation of boarding houses to the N D I S, since most of the people involved were N D I S providers. Is there some evidence that the department is losing steam in interest in in supervising boarding houses because they're anticipating some future policy where it'll be handed over?
Uh, so the the reduction over those two financial years is uh reflective of the pandemic and and also taking into consideration lockdown periods. So there were certain times when visits weren't able to be made due to to COVID safe principles.
Or have they resumed? You wouldn't be still operating in
No.
pandemic situations now. Could you perhaps give us some information on notice that would suggest to us that um that that they are now back at a, something that was similar to twenty nineteen?
Absolutely. So yes, I can um confirm that that the visits are back uh operating still in COVID safe ways. Uh but the 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 reduction in that data over that period is reflective of COVID and predominantly the two lockdown periods in those two financial years. But I can get some uh up up to date data for for to date this financial year for you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. What is it about the training or expertise of an occupational therapist that makes them uh uniquely qualified to make these assessments as to whether adjustments are necessary?
Uh, my understanding, based on the uh allied health requirements of an occupational therapist, is that they uh work around fine finding gross motor skills. So accessi- accessibility for somebody wi- within a house, which is why it falls within the remit of an occupational therapist.
They're the only discipline that can make this assessment. Is that the view that's taken?
That is my understanding.
Hmm.
Do you know the approximate cost of an O T assessment of a a major modification for someone?
I'd need to take that on notice.
It would be some thousands of dollars sometimes, wouldn't it?
I'd need to take it on notice. Again, uh uh unfortunately, the the panel that we requested had my colleagues from Landon Housing Corporation and Operations for which the the home modifications sat.
One reason uh for my question apart from the issues that have been raised as to whether an assessment is truly required in all cases is I think we heard some evidence uh that uh there are not sufficient O Ts available. And if there are insufficient O Ts available, I just wonder whether in this broad wide land, there mightn't be some other people who might be able to do the job, perhaps at lesser cost.
Yep. Uh, so one of the strategies in response to um access to O Ts was the funding that I mentioned earlier, where the department's invested the additional two million dollars last financial year and this financial year.
I understand that. That's an attempt to overcome the shortage of O Ts. But I'm, my question is really directed as to whether it's a question of shortage of O Ts or whether there's an artificial uh division of responsibility between O Ts and everybody else with O Ts being given a monopoly of this kind of assessment. I've got nothing against O Ts, I should say. I just, just, just puzzling to me, that's all. Um, this may be something you want to take on notice, but let me put a hypothetical to. Somebody who's N D I, N D I S, they're living in public housing. They're, they don't need at a particular time to use a wheelchair, but their condition deteriorates and they do need a wheelchair. And that means that there's a difficulty because the doorways aren't wide enough. What does that person do as a matter of practice and far as you're concerned, to get the doorways wide? What does the person have to do?
I will take this on notice so I get the correct information for you as to what the process would look like.
Hmm. I'm just wondering why, in that situation, it wouldn't be a reasonable adjustment within the meaning of the Disability Discrimination Act for the state authority, the corporation, to bear responsibility for widening the doorways as distinct from putting it to the N D I S. But you might like to take that on notice and let us know what the practicality is.
Okay.
All right, well then, uh thank you very much. I'll uh, is is there anything that any council wishes to raise with uh Ms. Ben? No? All right, very good. Thank you very much for your uh attendance today and for the statement. If you'd be good enough to take the matters on notice, I'm sure that the council will arrange for a timetable for that to be done.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dindal. Could we adjourn till two o'clock, please?
Yes, it's now nearly one o'clock. We'll adjourn till two and resume at that time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Miss Dowell.
Thank you, Chair. This afternoon, we'll be hearing from Ms. Lisa Short, who is the State Manager, New South Wales and the Australian Capital Territory from the National Disability Insurance Agency.
Ms. Short, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission and for your uh detailed statement, which we have all read. Um, if you would be good enough uh to follow the instructions of my associate who is over there, he will administer to you either the oath or the, oh, the affirmation.
I will read you the affirmation at the end. Please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Short. I'll just indicate where Commissioners are. On the screen, you can see Commissioner Galbally, who is joining the hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner Ryan is uh on my left. I'm the Chair of the Royal Commission, and Ms. Dowell will now ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Short, you prepared a statement for the Royal Commission, as the Chair has indicated. And that's a statement dated the third of August two thousand twenty two. And Commissioners, that's at tab bundle A two, tab thirteen. There was also a corrigendum dated the twenty eighth of August twenty twenty two in which you corrected the statistics in some of the paragraphs of your statement.
That's correct.
And that's at tab thirteen, capital A. With those corrections, are the contents of your statement true and correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, you are, as I said in introduction, the State Manager for New South Wales and the Australian Capital Territory in the, for the N D I A.
That's correct.
And you indicate at paragraph nine of your statement, the responsibilities of your role. And they include managing and leading the functional areas within the operation and implementation of the N D I S for New South Wales and the A C T.
Yes.
Coordinating and driving service delivery from a quality of participant experience and a productivity perspective.
Yes.
And delivery of quality planning outcomes in accordance with relevant timelines and quality standards.
Yes.
And working across New South Wales and the A C T to plan and deliver N D I syst- N D I A systems and processes that protect the integrity of the participant experience and ensure participants and their carers are provided with consistent, high-quality experience from access through to plan reviews.
That's correct.
So if we could summarise all of that, your operations.
I'm operations.
Thank you. Now, you did, in your statement, provide us with some statistics. And I'd like to direct your attention, if I could, to paragraph twenty nine of your statement.
Yes.
So so I'm going to be looking here at paragraphs twenty nine and thirty and the the concepts of or definitions of homelessness and risk of homelessness from the N D I A perspective. We see from paragraph twenty nine that you talk about people who self-report homelessness.
That's correct.
And that self-report comes from the short form questionnaire.
Yes.
And you have given us in paragraph twenty five of your statement the options that exist in the short form questionnaire for participants aged fifteen and over.
That's correct.
Are we correct to understand that the numbers you've given us in paragraph twenty nine are only those people who have answered option K, temporary shelter, bracket homelessness, close bracket?
Twenty nine, um, no, I believe it's short-term crisis, temporary shelter and supported accommodation and boarding house hostel.
What then is risk of homelessness defined for the N D I A's perspective?
So they would all be counted as risk of homelessness, um people living in that type of accommodation, short-term crisis, shelter. Um, hang on, I'm sorry. You were correct. You were correct. Yeah. Short-term crisis or temporary shelter would be homeless. And then the other supported accommodation and boarding house or private hotel or hostel could be uh indicators of risk of homelessness.
So I'll just direct your attention to paragraph thirty, where you've set out A is for statistics for hostel, B is for boarding house and private hotel, and C is short-term crisis. Does that mean, because in in thirty, aren't you talking about people, participants who are at risk of homelessness?
Yes.
So short-term crisis is risk.
Risk, yes, sorry, risk.
Does the N D I A have a definition of homelessness that informs that category in the short form questionnaire?
Not a definition as such, no.
So it's just for people to tell you?
Yes.
You were following the evidence this morning from the department?
Yes, I was.
And you would have heard Ms. Mitchell say that if a person is at risk of homelessness and they're an N D I S participant, then the N D I S works with them closely and provides them with interim accommodation. And there are a number of actions that the N D I A can take to stop someone falling into homelessness. So I just want to break that down. Does the N D I S provide interim accommodation to someone who is homeless?
We can on a case-by-case basis. Um, so participants who present as homeless, if they become homeless or at risk of homelessness because of their disability, we can provide them with short-term accommodation. We would also then uh put funds in the participant's plan for a specialist support coordinator. And their role would be to engage the participant with mainstream housing and homelessness services to identify a longer-term option for that participant.
So when you've said that if they become homeless because of their disability, how do, how does the N D I A assess whether that is the reason they've become homeless?
Well, um, for an example, if you have um a person that perhaps has an intellectual disability and um maybe autistic, maybe displaying behaviours of concern in the home, um making the family members feel unsafe, um they um, you know, may decide that it's time that the person or the participant lives independently from the family. And um that would be a direct result of their disability.
You've provided us with a document called the Escalation and Prioritisation Matrix. Commissioners, that's in volume A two at tab fifteen. And that matrix has a a risk category that's instability of accommodation arrangements of a person.
Yes.
And at each of the the levels of escalation and prioritize prioritization, i- it includes the words, and the N D I A has a role in working with the state services to rectify. So to rectify the the instability or the risk of homelessness.
Yep.
How do you work out when the N D I A has a role to play?
So the N D I A has a role to play um to prevent homelessness for our participants by ensuring they have adequate supports in their plan that will assist them to maintain a tenancy, to build their capacity to do things like pay their rent on time, um keep their properties clean. Um, so that that's our role in prevention of homelessness is putting in those capacity building supports for our participants to to prevent them from losing their tenancy or being evicted.
And from a participant's perspective, what does that look like? How how does the support get into the plan?
So a range of ways that the um, if if on in the pre-planning meeting, those types of accommodations were identified. If a participant identified that they were in short-term crisis accommodation, that would trigger the planner to have a deeper conversation about them with the participant about their situation and then ensure that there's adequate plans in the funds that are appropriate to assist the participants and navigate the housing and homelessness services um and to, you know, help them explore alternative housing options.
Thank you. I've just been asked if you could just slow down your pace of speaking a little so the interpreters can keep up. It's okay. I'll get the morning for myself in a minute. So so that's if it's triggered in the, sorry, if there's something in the pre-planning documentation that it triggers a deeper conversation. If somebody's already an N D I S participant, you you've told us in your statement that if the N D I A becomes aware that a person has become homeless or at risk of homelessness, it it can trigger an action. What what does it trigger? What happens next for the participant when the N D I A finds out they're at risk of homelessness?
So when the N D I A um identifies that a participant has become homeless, the first thing we would do is make contact with the participant or their carer or their guardian or whomever we could contact and organise to meet with that participant to uh look at what plan, what extra funds may need to go into their plan to assist them to um navigate the homelessness and housing sector.
Does the support coordinator assist with that navigation?
Yes.
And so would that be expected to be a a proactive role that the support coordinator is involved in?
Absolutely. Part of the support coordinator's role is to assist um the participant to engage with community and mainstream uh supports um as well as to implement their fu- their plan, um connect them with other supports they may have funded in their plan and to ensure they're able to utilise their plan and the way it was intended.
You've you've used the language in your answer then and in your statement about connecting and engaging. What what is it that the support coordinator does beyond providing the name and perhaps contact details of the mainstream service?
So they would walk with alongside the participant in that process. So they would assist the participant to um make any applications they needed to make for social housing, ensure that the participant understood what the next step was in that process, assist the participant to gain any um assessments or evidence that may be required to submit to the housing provider, uh to accompany them to uh um look at potential properties.
Slow down again.
Sorry, um accompany them to look at any potential properties, um assist them to arrange moving in. Assist them to arrange moving in, um, you know, work with them around how their rent will be paid. System with furnish, furniture, all that sort of stuff.
We've heard evidence from NDIS participants who indicate to the Royal Commission. They don't know what their support coordinator can do to help them. They don't understand the role. What does the NDI A do to provide participants with information about what the support coordinator is supposed to be doing?
So after a plan is approved and there's support coordination in the plan. Um, the participant attends what we call an implementation meeting. That meeting will either be with the agency delegate who approved the plan. Or will be with our local area coordinator from one of our partners in the community. And the role in that meeting is to explain and make sure the participants. You know, aware and comfortable moving forward with what the role of their support coordinator should be. And what they can do if they're finding that they're not actually getting the service they require from that support coordinator.
Does the fact that some of the witnesses are telling us they don't know what their support coordinator can do for them. If, if we're hearing that evidence, does it suggest there's a problem in that meeting? The information's not getting through?
I'm not quite sure the reason behind that, but I'm certainly aware that there are. Levels of quality with support coordinators, um, around the country and in New South Wales, um. We, the agency, um, provides training for organisations who support, uh, who employ support coordinators. Some support coordinators are sole traders so that they're running their own business. We've recently, um, put out a new support coordination framework. Which identifies for support coordinators what their role is and what the agency's expectations of that role are. Um, the organisations that employ them are responsible for ensuring that their staff are aware. Of what their role is in the role of support coordination. And there are a range of, uh, resources available for providers on our website.
Would you accept the proposition that from an NDIS participant's perspective, so someone who is homeless or at risk of homelessness? Their capacity to get the right support will depend largely on the skill, knowledge and proactivity of their support coordinator?
Yes, in some circumstances, yes.
And you spoke about that meeting with the, either the delegate who's made the plan. Or the local area coordinator, the lack who's going to explain what the coordinator's role is. What is the NDI A doing internally to make sure that information gets out to the participant through that delegate or the lack?
So again, that discussion's had in the meeting. When we, when we, uh, engage a support coordinator on behalf of a participant. Um, we send what we call a request for service. So that goes out to the support coordinator and lists and identifies, identifies what the vulnerabilities might be for each participant. And outlines what services we expect, um, from that support coordinator. And how often we expect them to report back to us on their progress.
And do you check progress against that expectation?
Yes, we do.
And how do you do that?
We do that regularly when we do check in. So we, we regularly check in with participants. Um, in between plan start date and plan end date. Um, and we, we do a desktop review, of course, before we call participants and that's one of the things that we look at.
And so again, I'll just ask you to slow down a little, but these regular check-ins, are these every six months, every three months?
That's again, on an individual basis. There are many participants who say, uh, you know, don't contact me till my. My plan reassessment date because I'm fine in, in getting on with my life. Others will, um, want to be contacted more often. But we do have, um, on our system, we have, we can identify participants who may be particularly vulnerable. That we would call more often for things like if they're not utilising their plan, that would be a trigger. Um, for participants who have little or no informal support. And for participants who might only have one provider in, in providing them with services, we'd call them more often.
For a participant whom you would describe to use your language as vulnerable. What role would that person play in practice in the selection of a support coordinator?
The participant?
Yes.
Yes, so choice and control would, would suggest that we, participants would choose their own support coordinator. The agency can, however, if they're not sure, they don't, they haven't heard of any providers, they're not aware of. Who a good support coordinator could be, the agency system will allow us to, um. Select a, a support coordinator for that participant.
Is that what happens in practice most of the time with someone who has, for example.
Just so people.
A significant intellectual disability?
For someone with a significant dis, uh, intellectual disability, it would often be their guardian or their plan nominee who would choose the support coordinator. Why?
Why wouldn't the person choose themselves?
Well, someone with a severe intellectual disability may not understand the role of the support coordinator. They certainly could choose themselves if they wished, but often, often it's the, the carer or the, the nominee or the guardian. We would support them to make that decision if that's what they wanted to do.
If the agency selects a, a support coordinator for a particular. Participant, what is done to ensure. That there is a working relationship between the support coordinator. And the participant with a view to, uh, ensuring that the participant can understand. What the support coordinator is meant to do and has the opportunity of checking. Himself or herself, whether that actually happens.
We would ask that question in our checking conversations with participants. Certainly if there was, uh, the participant wasn't utilising their plan, that would be, uh, you know, an alarm for us. Um, especially if the only funds being drawn down were support coordination and the participant wasn't linked to any funds, any other. Services, so that would certainly trigger, um, a check-in. So conversations with our participants, um, around and their, and their carers and families around the quality of the support coordination. Is very important.
What happens if, uh, the agency forms the view that the support coordinator isn't doing. What they're meant to be doing, and particularly in the case of someone who may be at risk of homelessness.
So if the agency, um, made a dis, or determination that, that a support coordinator wasn't fulfilling their role adequately. There's a few things we would do. Um, we would speak to, uh, other parts of the business who look after providers and, and what providers do. Who would engage, um, with the organisation that employs that support coordinator. Um, we would also make a notification to the commission, um, the Quality and Safeguards Commission. That the quality of service being provided isn't adequate to meet the participants' needs.
And what would then happen to change the situation?
Well, I imagine the commission would then investigate and, um. I, I'm not really sure, Chair, what their, their role would be after the investigation.
Someone who's at risk of homelessness, this sounds like a process that, uh. Is not actually calculated to produce a rapid solution to the accommodation problem, doesn't?
No, Chair, it doesn't. And I thought we were talking about participants generally, um, in that question. But, but yes, certainly if someone is at risk of homelessness and the support coordinator isn't doing their job. We would want to talk to that participant about, uh, choosing a different support coordinator.
Hmm.
Thank you, Chair. So in fact, my question was about somebody when you had, when the NDI A had become aware that they had become homeless. And your answer began with risk of homelessness, but if we can make sure, perhaps if your answers today focus on those two categories. Homeless and risk of homelessness rather than participants generally. So you, you've been answering questions about, um, if the, the quality of the support coordination isn't. Effective or isn't doing what the NDI A expects and you reported off to the commission and we're having them here on Friday. We'll have some questions for them about what they do. But given that you've described the NDI A as having capacity to appoint a support coordinator. Do you appoint a new one so that at least there's somebody doing the job of helping the person who's homeless or at risk of homelessness?
Certainly if that's what the participant wants. We have to take the participant's, um, opinion into account, um, for choice and control.
But if you didn't take it into account in appointing the first one?
Well, we don't appoint, uh, how the si, the system randomly appoints it. It's not, it's not, um, a planner choosing for the participant. Um, we can't be, um, pointing business to particular providers. So the system, um, can generate one that's in their local community. Um, and that is registered for the type of supports coordination or the level of support coordination that that, um, participant requires.
And so in that emergency urgent context where somebody has become homeless. It is, as I understand it, the support coordinator's role to assist that person to act, to obtain accessible crisis accommodation.
Correct.
And to assist them to apply for social housing if that's something they wish to do.
Correct, or, or private rental or whatever their situation may be.
And in the, the social housing context to respond to offers of accommodation.
Correct.
And that would include going on the inspection with them?
Yes, in some situations, yes. If the participant required it, yes.
And risk, making requests for adjustments and modifications to, uh, a property.
Yes.
And would that include completing the forms?
Or assisting the participant to complete the forms, yes.
And assisting the participant to obtain any assessments that happen to be necessary.
That's correct.
And those are assessments whether for the social housing or for home modification under the NDIS.
Correct.
In her evidence this morning, Ms Mitchell said that, that, that the department, um, wasn't the, the last resort provider. Sorry, I'm paraphrasing because I didn't actually write it down in my notes. Is the NDIS the last resort? Are you, are you the organisation that stops people on the pathway to homelessness or helps them recover from being homeless?
The NDI A is responsible for providing reasonable and necessary supports to participants who are homeless. Or at risk of homelessness within the framework of our legislation. So the Aptos guides us in regards to responsibilities and it clearly states that. Um, the provision of housing, social and cri, social housing, public housing and homelessness services. Is the responsibility of states and territories. And the agency is responsible for the provision of supports related to someone's disability. That might assist them to maintain a tenancy and prevent them from becoming homeless or at risk of homelessness. And navigating those systems as well to ensure they can, um, secure long-term housing.
Why wouldn't section fourteen of the Act authorise the NDI A to provide funding for. Short-term accommodation itself for people at risk of homelessness?
Um, Chair, I'm not, I can't memorise section fourteen of the Act, which.
Oh, well, let me remind you, the agency may provide assistance in the form of funding for persons or entities. For the purposes of enabling those persons or entities to assist people with disability. To realise their potential for physical, social, emotional and intellectual development and participate in social and economic life. Why wouldn't that authorise the agency to provide funds or even to establish its own. Form of crisis accommodation or whatever that would allow it to assist people who are participants in the NDIS directly. Rather than require them to go through what for many would be. An extraordinarily complicated and difficult process of navigating bureaucratic decision-making procedure.
Yes, Chair, I, I think that's a, a, a policy issue that's probably a bit out of my remit, um. But certainly we're guided by the Aptos. It's a set of principles, I know, and, um. But it is, is what we have to guide us on, you know, the separation of the responsibilities between the states and the Commonwealth.
But it's not inevitable, is it? That division of responsibilities between state and the Commonwealth, that's something that, as you say, I understand it's not your decision. But it's something that is a matter for policymakers. And it would, and it would be one possible solution to the sorts of problems, or at least a partial solution to the sorts of problems we've been hearing about for two and a half day. Is that a yes?
Yes, Chair, I agree.
Did you hear the evidence before you from the New South Wales?
Yes, I did.
Did you hear the, um, Ms Dendel say that the New South Wales government did not consider itself the place of last resort? For the provision of, of, um, of housing for people who were homeless and had a disability?
Yes, I did.
So who's right?
Um, I think I'll leave that for the Royal Commission. Um, I, as far in my practice, um. The Aptos i- is the guidance and it says very clearly that, um. You know, the NDIS is not responsible for the provision of social, public or housing or homelessness services. That that is the responsibility of the states.
I, I'd be really surprised if that issue has not been discussed at a really high level. Between the New South Wales Government and other state governments and the NDI A, has it not?
I, I'm, I'm sure it has, but I d, I don't know, Commissioner.
You, you would understand, what would you do if you're a, how, how does a participant work out who's going to help them? If two pretty senior public servants on the same day can have a different opinion on who's responsible?
Yes, I think when we're talking about a participant, um, wanting to know who's responsible. Um, we wouldn't put that in the lap of the participant. Um, we would work that out between the agency and. And housing or homelessness services and not attempt not to ever involve the participant in that, those discussions. Because they don't really need to worry about who's going to fund it, they just need it funded.
If I could perhaps draw on the example of Colin. Now, I don't want you to, to discuss his case in particular. But that kind of scenario, somebody who's been, he's become homeless and he needs a place to be. He's an NDIS participant, he needs accessible housing and he hasn't been able to secure it. He, his evidence, I'm sure you heard earlier this week, is that he is still moving between short-term. Temporary accommodation. That process you've just described in answer to Commissioner Ryan, that the, the government, the agency would work with the relevant state government. And find the right solution and not en, not engage the participant. I, could you perhaps tell us how that should occur in a situation like Collins?
So firstly, I'd like to say I did, uh, listen to Colin's testimony and I was absolutely, um. Could not imagine how traumatic, um, that, that situation in the flood could have been for him and his, his sister. And brother-in-law, um, in saying that, um, Colin, yes, an NDIS participant, um, after the flood. So in that situation, the emergency services need to go in and do their bit. Um, but post, post the, the flood, the NDI A, I, we're aware of participants. In that, um, disaster area, we attempted to make. We, we attempted to make over nine hundred phone calls to participants in that area. And unfortunately, the telecommunications were down and we were only able to contact, I think, a hundred and thirty-five. We did put in a, um, in our national contact centre, uh, like if you're in the Lismore floods, press one. Uh, that were then taken to the top of the list so we could identify any participants who were in urgent need of, um, equipment. Or might have needed short-term accommodation, um, you know, equipment replacement, wheelchairs and the like. Um, and we, you know, managed to get through to many more. Our, our local area quarter, coordinator partner based in Lismore Social Futures. Also deployed staff to the, uh, recovery centres and evacuation centres in those areas. To identify any people with disabilities who may have needed support. That I haven't really answered your question.
No, so once they've identified them, because, you know, we've, we've got a scenario, so we've identified someone. Your lack has done their job, they've identified them. What next? Where do they sleep tonight?
Okay, they sleep in, um, crisis accommodation that was provided by state emergency services initially. We could then put in short-term accommodation or medium-term accommodation into their. We could then put in short-term accommodation or medium-term accommodation into their plan until their house was repaired or if they could return to their previous accommodation. Um, if not, once again, we'd put in intensive or specialised support coordination to assist them to navigate. And unfortunately, hearing Colin's experience of his support coordinator, um, that's not what should have happened.
Back to the crisis accommodation provided by the state, if it's not accessible or all the accessible beds are already taken up by the time you get down to our hypothetical participant, then what?
Then I believe Colin was in a in a motel at some point. Um. It it's difficult, there was absolutely no accommodation available in in Lismore.
But you do accept the NDI had a, has a role in those kinds of scenarios and it should have been more proactive than might have been Colin's experience.
Should have been more proactive, but again, in Colin's experience, I mean, he even testified that there was just nowhere, no vacant uh dwelling to to move into. And and that's, that's um a whole nother um level.
Yeah. Now, you you referred in your answer before to you might have provided medium-term accommodation.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is that medium-term accommodation is only available if you're approved for SDA, but you're waiting for that to come available. Or you're approved for home modifications and you need somewhere to live while that takes place. Are you saying medium-term accommodation is available in other scenarios?
Well, in in times of disasters, I I'll give you an example back during the COVID, COVID pandemic, pandemic. The government made um some allowances in regards to supports that participants could draw down on their plan from. So things like PPE, um, you know, different supports for when people were in lockdown. So in times of disaster, we certainly would, if we were aware of, if if we're aware that the participant requires medium-term accommodation while their home is being uh fixed from a disaster, that's certainly something we'd look at on a case-by-case basis.
And in that scenario, would the agency do an own motion plan variation or reassessment and just get that money in? You wouldn't need a change in circumstances for the person?
No, we'd just get it done.
In, stop me if I already asked you this question because I flicked back in my notes, but did I ask you about SDA accommodation?
No, I don't think so, counsel.
Thank you. Uh, in the context of talking about SDA this morning, Ms Eastman asked whether the Commonwealth was in the business of building how NDIS housing and Ms Mitchell said that that would be a question for the NDI. So can you tell us, is the NDI on behalf of the Commonwealth in the business of building SDA accommodation?
No.
What does the NDI do insofar as SDA accommodation is concerned?
So the SDA provides funding for a participant to live in an SDA property. So it's a, it's a incentive to encourage developers to uh invest in specialist disability accommodation. Um, and it provides our participants with a safe and secure access to their own home. Um, especially when uh, you know, the cost of renting such an accessible apartment would be way outside of what a participant who's eligible for SDA could afford.
So does it come down to this? The NDI will pay the rent on an SDA accommodation?
Basically, yes.
You said basically, is there a nuance that we need to understand?
Definitely, yes.
And the other times that the NDI will literally pay the rent is medium-term accommodation?
Yes.
And the the short-term crisis accommodation?
Yes.
Are there any other scenarios in which the NDI pays the rent?
There's individualised living options um that may pay um, may pay a portion of the rent. Now, these ILOs, as they're known as, are not my specialty because they mainly developed in Western Australia. Um, but I believe there are, there are two levels of that. We can uh fund a um, like to begin, uh, to explore a individualised living option for a participant. And then we can fund a um, you know, a housing solution. So it may be that somebody, um, a housemate situation whereby that's an increase in informal support. And the NDI may subsidise the rental component of the housemate uh living in 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 there. Um, it could be a neighbour who's prepared to provide a range of informal support or drop-in support. And the the agency can fund some of that. So because they're individualised and basically in Western Australia, I don't really have a live example to give you, I'm sorry.
Why would this be limited to Western Australia?
Well, it's not limited. It it can, it is happening now. It's starting to happen all over the country. But the Western Australian Government started that um design of that model um before the NDIS. So a lot of that has continued. So so Western Australia is very familiar with it. Um, New South Wales providers are just starting to to explore it.
So if you get ILO funding in your plan and you have stage one, as you said, it's the design and exploration phase. Somebody comes in and looks at what's the right support for this participant. Then stage two, implementation. I accept what you've said about you're not familiar with this, but presumably the capacity to implement relies upon there being a a provider and a dwelling in which the it can be provided, the supports can be provided.
That's correct. So the participant and the provider would work closely together to design what the, what the model might look like.
And it may be the case isn't, is it correct to say that that um design and exploration phase my, may determine that ILO is not the right option and you should be in supported independent living maybe for some capacity building?
Yep, possibly.
When the NDI is making its planning decisions, deciding what is a reasonable and necessary support, what's going to be included in the plan? Do you have regard to the availability of accommodation options that are consistent with those supports?
No, we don't take that into account. Um, we 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 put the reasonable and necessary supports in the plan.
So if a participant gets approved for an ILO, but there's no provider available and there's no building available, what happens next for that participant?
So the support coordinator would work with that that participant to explore other options. That it could be that the participant might be willing to move to a different area um or might move closer to family. Um, there'd be a whole range of, of, you know, options that they would explore as part of that exploration package.
Shouldn't that happen as part of the planning, rather than after it's in the plan for a thing that can't be delivered?
So we wouldn't know that what the participant wants couldn't be delivered until after they've explored that with um with the provider or with the um support coordinator. So a participant might say, I've heard about these individualised living options, I'd like to apply for for that. We'd put the exploration and design funding in their plan first. Um, and then when they had identified where they want to live and who with and how it's going to work, then we put the implementation funding in.
There's no obligation on a participant to identify the kind of support they want, is there?
There's no obligation, but they can. Participants often want to choose who they live with and where they live. Um, and that's perfectly their right.
Absolutely, but what if they, what if their goal is a little more general? I want a stable, secure home. Give me any option that gives me that.
So we'd explore, but what does that mean for you? What does a stable and secure home look like for you?
Yeah, and then you would have an assessment around that?
Yes.
And you would build a plan?
Yes.
And if the plan can't be implemented, the support coordinator needs to come up with another one?
Well, needs to work with the participant to find an alternative, but we would stop, wouldn't stop um seeking um the model that the participant prefers.
Well, e- except if there's nowhere to deliver that model. Because that, that's what we're trying to examine, what I'm trying to examine.
Sometimes an I, an individual living option will allow a participant to access private rental. Whereas perhaps on their own, they wouldn't be able to access that.
Is it your experience as the state manager for New South Wales and the ACT that there is a lack of housing? There are a lack of accommodation options available for NDIS participants?
Yes.
And would you agree that that lack of housing contributes to homelessness and the risk of homelessness for NDIS participants?
Yes.
They become homeless because there's nowhere for them to go.
That's correct.
Does the NDI have a role in providing advice to state and territory governments about the level of demand for housing?
Yes, and we do on a regular basis. Uh, we meet with the New South Wales Government at all different levels. Um, at the local level, at the system level and policy level to talk about uh issues such as that.
The local level of the New South Wales Government, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Sorry, the housing, you know, the local housing office.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
And when you say you meet regularly, is is that monthly, quarterly?
Um, at the local level, I think it would be um on a case-by-case basis and regarding a particular participant. So resolving an issue for a particular participant. Um, at the system level, uh, we meet with, I meet with New South Wales Government bi-monthly um and talk about a whole range of issues, um, housing and homelessness being one of those. Um, and at systems level, at the policy level, our state relations branch meet with um senior officials from New South Wales Government regularly as well to talk through some of these issues.
So I want to change tack now and ask you some questions about applying for access to the NDIS. We're almost going backwards a little. And we asked you these questions in the not, or asked New South Wales the questions in the notice your statement responds to. And I'd like to direct your attention to paragraph forty-four. So we had asked a question about whether the NDI provides funding or other support to a person with a disability who is experiencing homelessness to obtain medical or other assessments to support their application for access. And in paragraph forty-four, you say that not all access requests require evidence in the form of written assessments. And I just would like to understand how that paragraph fits with your paragraph forty-two C, where you talk about accepting statements from prospective participants and their support workers as secondary evidence in addition to medical evidence. It sounds like medical evidence is always required.
In order to gain access, um, a person, a a p- prospective participant needs to um meet some criteria. Um, the first criteria is they must be uh under sixty-five years or under. They must be an Australian resident and they must have a permanent and significant um disability relating to um one of five domains um which are uh physical disability or m- diff- impairment with mobility, with self-care, with self-management, with communication or with learning. So um in order to prove a permanency of an impairment, um, evidence from a medical practitioner is usually required, like a GP. Um, um, because we, you know, access delegates in the agency can't make an assessment as to whether someone's um impairment is is a lifelong impairment.
So the question is, uh, i- is a written assessment always required? Yeah, the answer is some degree of medical evidence.
Some degree of medical evidence, yes.
And you go on in paragraph forty-four to say that um in some cases where a person with a psychosocial disability is applying to access the NDIS, evidence of a repeat history, I'm sorry, evidence of a history of repeat homelessness may be accepted by the NDI in lieu of a formal functional assessment as part of the justification of the substantial reduction in capacity. What is evidence of repeat homelessness, given your answer before about there's no definition of homelessness other than a self-report?
So um, e- evidence of uh a history of accessing crisis services. So it could be a letter from um a homelessness service to to outline the history of access for a particular participant to those services would be, would be evidence.
And who decides whether the formal functional assessment is requi- required or whether that letter from the service is enough?
So the access delegate would make that decision. They would look at whether they have enough information in front of them to make a decision on access. If not, they would request further information to enable them to make that decision.
You talk at paragraph forty-two B and forty-nine about how with the consent of the prospective participant, the NDI can contact their support workers or health professionals to obtain evidence in support of the application.
That's correct.
If a delegate isn't satisfied on the basis of the evidence that a prospective participant has submitted and consent has been given, does the delegate contact those people before making a decision to reject the access application?
Generally, yes.
In what circumstances wouldn't they?
If they had enough information in in the the written evidence to suggest that the participant wouldn't make access. Um, they may not make a call, but generally they would. Um, and I have made those calls myself previously.
So there's something in the material provided that satisfies the delegate view that this person, this prospective participant, is never going to satisfy the access requirements.
Well, there may be uh not enough written evidence that, that the delegate may want to question the health professional about, ask, ask for more information, which, and if they can do that over the phone, they would, rather than request the participant to go back to them for more information.
Um, perhaps you misunderstood my question. I was asking, I thought you had said there are some occasions when a delegate would make the decision to reject without making that phone.
Oh, yes, 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 there would be. If there, if if there was absolute evidence that the participant won't make access, they would do that.
Now, the Chair asked you some questions earlier about um section fourteen of the Act and he, he hopefully read it out to you. But you have also referenced section fourteen in your statement and it appears in footnote nineteen. But it's in answer to the question about evidence gathering and supporting a prospective participant to obtain the assessments that they might need. Now, my question is, how is the availabili- the potential availability of funding under section fourteen communicated to prospective participants?
I'm not sure if it is. Access isn't actually my part of the business. Um, I have uh dealt in it many years ago, but um I'm not actually sure. So can I take that on notice, please, counsel?
Uh, you certainly can, and you may need to take the next couple on notice, but I'll keep going. What's the application process if you want to use section fourteen?
Once again, yes.
And in paragraph forty-seven, you note that when a potential participant's application has been designed, declined, the LAC can support the prospective participant in gathering evidence to seek review of that decision to decline. My question is, does that assistance include getting them some section fourteen funding to get their medical evidence?
I'll have to take that on notice.
I thought you might. Thank you very much for that.
Just to put uh que- uh paragraph forty-four in context, you were asked about that by Ms Dowsert. And uh paragraph forty-four indicates that evidence of a history of repeat homelessness may be accepted by the NDI in lieu of a formal functional assessment as part of a justification of a substantial reduction in capacity for self-management. That I take it is a reference to one of the criteria set out in twenty-four, one of the Act, that a, an applicant must satisfy before a plan can be approved.
Yes.
So that what you're referring to is the third of the requirements, namely that the impairment result in substantially reduced functional capacity to undertake or psycho- psychosocial functioning and undertaking one or more of the following activities, communication, social interaction. So homelessness, repeated homelessness can provide, I think you say, as part of a justification for satisfying the third of the requirements.
Yes, Chair.
But it is not capable of being used to satisfy any of the other requirements. Is that the way I should read forty-four? For example, if someone, if someone has had repeated periods of homelessness, would that not be an indication that the person has a disability attributable, for example, to cognitive impairments?
Yes, Chair, it could.
And is that what happens in practice?
Yes, Chair. The, the reduction in capacity for self-management could, could indicate a range of impairments, yes.
Yes, I see. All right, thank you.
And does that evidence come to the NDIA through the, the service? If, if a homelessness service is connecting, to use your words, the, the prospective participant with the NDIS, they know to send them along with a letter that talks about how often they have accessed the service?
So when a participant submits an access request form, there is a, a evidence of disability form attached to that. Now, I'm going from my memory here, so that is where that information could be provided on that part of the form.
And you have referred in your statement to the capacity, the ability of a prospective participant to make a verbal application, that you say that you don't have to fill in the form.
Yes, you can make a verbal access request.
And when you make a verbal access request, it is still the case that you then need to send in the evidence package that supports that access request, isn't it? It's not all done on the phone.
I don't have any experience with verbal access requests, so can I take that one on notice, please?
Yes, please. I'm going to move on to the, the final set of topics that I have for you today, which is about SRSs. Now, I preface this by acknowledging that you are from, you're the State Manager of New South Wales and the ACT, and that supported residential services are a Victorian thing. So I won't be asking you questions specifically about how the SRS scheme works, but I do want to ask you questions about how the NDIS intersects with that scheme. So if there's something you feel is a little too SRS-y, please just say if you can't answer. So the Royal Commission will hear evidence in the next couple of days about the SRS scheme. And we understand that there are approximately four thousand people who live in SRSs in Victoria and about a third of them are NDIS participants. I want to run through, if I can, a list of potential reasonable and necessary supports, things that the NDIS might fund for a person that might also be provided by the SRS. Now, you won't be able to answer the second bit, we'll have other witnesses who do that. But can I just run through this list with you? So under the heading of personal care supports, would the NDIS fund assistance with daily hygiene that might be showering, bathing, brushing hair, brushing teeth or dentures?
Yes, it would.
Would the NDIS fund meals, the preparation and cooking of meals?
That would be on an individual basis. If the, if the SRS did not provide meals and a participant was required to cook their own meals, but was unable to do so because of their limited function, yes, the NDIS would fund that.
Perhaps I wasn't clear. Just forget about the SRS for a moment. Just, does the N, NDIS fund as a reasonable and necessary support the things I'm going to list to you? So the cooking of meals, can you get NDIS funding for that?
Cooking of meals, yes.
Ms Dousat, these questions don't really have anything to do with the SRS. Yes, do they? I mean, you, you, you wanting Miss Short to provide evidence as to what the NDIS will fund, but that's independent of whether it happens to be associated with the SRS or not.
Perhaps I have confused the point.
You've probably confused me, necessarily anyone else, but anyway.
So what I'm seeking to do with this piece of the evidence is establish what it is the NDIS funds.
Yeah.
It will go together with some evidence you will hear from a different witness about what the SRS.
So we can ignore the SRS for present purposes?
Yes, please do, Chair. So we, we did meals. Assistance with eating, so actually having your meal, is that something the NDIS? Toiling and managing incontinence.
Yes.
Dressing.
Yes.
Managing medication.
Yes.
Accessing healthcare providers.
Yes.
Laundry, cleaning your clothes.
Yes.
Cleaning bedding linen and towels.
Not the provision of that, but the cleaning, yes.
Cleaning of the house, like, so cleaning your bedroom.
Yes.
Bathroom.
Yes.
Kitchen and living area.
Yes.
Outdoor areas.
Yes.
Maintenance, repairing broken windows and doors.
Not generally.
Accessing the community.
Yes.
And providing support to improve living skills, for example, money and household management.
Yes.
Behavioral management.
Yes.
That's the list, thank you. So within the NDIS framework, is there a person with responsibility for ensuring that a person who receives funding for a particular support actually gets the support?
That's a difficult thing to monitor, counsel. If the NDIS becomes aware that there are some concerns that a provider is being paid for support provision that they're not providing, then our, our LAC partners and our planners internally would refer that matter to our fraud under our Chief Risk Officer Division, who would investigate that matter. We would also, at the same time, make a referral to the Quality and Safeguards Commission because of services, much-needed services not being provided to participants.
And you may not be able to answer this because it is, I'm now picking up the SRSs and so people who live in SRSs have residential and services agreements and they have ongoing support plans. To your knowledge, is there anyone within the NDIS that looks at any potential overlap between those two sets of documents to see whether a person is receiving the same services twice?
That will be difficult. I believe in the SRS, the participant pays for their board and lodging to the SRS provider from their disability support pension, which we don't have oversight of how they spend their disability support pension. The agreement between the SRS proprietor and the participant is between those two parties. The NDIS has no part in that. However, we're aware of some issues with participants residing in or have resided in SRSs. We have the ability now to put an alert on every participant's record who resides in an SRS and that alert will alert planners to be talking through these issues with participants when they're doing their check-ins to try and prevent any of that. And if we become aware of that, we would report that directly to the Human Services Regulator, who regulates the SRSs in Victoria, as well as the Quality and Safeguards Commission.
When did that alert come into effect? When did it start happening?
I'm, I'm not quite sure. That's Victorian team, so we'll take that on notice, absolutely.
Thank you. And in the, you said that this might, this alert might trigger during their checking conversations. Is it also part of the planning conversation to say, to invite the participant to share their SRS documentation? I, I accept you have no oversight of them, but the participant might share that with you so you know what they're getting?
Absolutely. That would be a question that we would ask, yes.
I want to now explore the issue of plan management arrangements. Now, so this is when, perhaps you can explain, plan management.
So there's three types of way a participant could manage their plan. They could be agency managed. And if they're agency managed, they can only use registered providers, that is, providers who are registered with the Quality and Safeguards Commission. They can use, they can self-manage, so that means that they manage all their, their funding and their providers themselves and they pay the providers directly. If they are plan managed, they have a plan manager, which then pays their providers based on the invoices providers give participants.
And if a plan is plan managed, is it correct to say that the NDIS doesn't have any oversight or any capacity to see who is providing the services, the support to the participant?
Generally, that's correct. We, there is a recent requirement for plan managers to put ABNs on the system of invoices they are paying. So that gives us some oversight, but not all. Our new pace system that's coming in, into, that we're rolling out at, starting at the end of the year will have much better ability for us to capture that type of information readily at hand.
If they have an ABN to put in.
Well, if plan, yeah, that, that will be able to drill down onto the ABN and get information about who the provider is. It won't necessarily tell us when supports were provided or, or what supports were provided. So it's difficult for our system to capture, basically.
The only information you see at the moment for a plan managed payment is that the money goes from the NDIS to the plan manager. You see the description of what the, what the support was, but all you see for who the payment goes to is it all goes to the plan manager.
Yes.
And you don't see who that gets dispersed to.
The plan manager records the ABN of the company that it's being dispersed to.
Under the new system or under the current system?
Under the current system, I believe. I will take that on notice because I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm pretty sure it is a new addition to our current system, but I will take it on notice.
So by new, it may be in force now.
It may be, but I, I want to give you an informed answer, so we'll check.
Could we please have, as part of your answer on notice, the date, if it is in effect now, the date upon which it came into effect?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, as part of that change to the information that the NDIS is capturing, will you have the capacity to see if an NDIS provider subcontracts to, to an SRS proprietor to provide the, the NDIS-funded support?
Once again, I'll need to check that for you, counsel.
Now, you spoke a little while ago about an alert system that is put on the plan for every resident of an SRS.
That is a participant, yes.
Who is an NDIS participant, yes. In paragraph sixty-four of your statement, you referred to an alert that is triggered. I think that's the right paragraph. Yes, paragraph sixty-four, NDIS planners are also notified through a system alert when plan utilization is irregular, such as if funding is being over or underspent.
Yes.
Are there similar alerts triggered if there is a change in participant's address?
We wouldn't be aware of a change of a participant's address unless we were notified. And then that, the change of address would just be changed in the system. There wouldn't necessarily be an alert to that.
We understand from some information provided to us by the NDIS Commission that the NDIS doesn't always have a record of a participant's address. Is that correct?
Some participants use a post office box or they use, prefer to use informal support address. So, but once again, I'll have that checked for you, counsel, sorry.
And can you also check whether for all of the NDIS participants who are SRS residents, whether that is necessarily recorded if you have that information?
Yep, certainly.
Back to the triggering of alerts, are alerts triggered if there's a change in a support coordinator?
No.
If there's a change in a plan manager?
No.
And if there's a change in an NDIS provider?
No.
Some evidence was given by Dr Pearce, the Victorian public advocate, in public hearing twenty-two, in public hearing twenty, about an NDIS participant who had been moved from an SRS to some private rental accommodation with six hundred thousand dollars in their NDIS plan. And in the space of seven months, that money had been spent and the resident, the NDIS participant, was facing eviction. What triggers should have been alerted in the NDIS to let you know about the move and the spending of the money? Or is that not something the NDIS, NDA should have been alerted to?
Yes, we certainly should have been alerted to that, counsel. There may have been an alert regarding the over-utilization of that, that plan. I, I imagine there would have been alert on that and that alert should trigger a check-in, at least a phone call. However, sometimes with participants in SRSs, it's the SRS proprietor that answers the phone and can make it challenging to speak to a participant.
What can the NDIS do if it becomes aware of some of these changes and it wants to explore whether the change is the result of the genuine exercise of choice and control or coercion of a vulnerable participant?
So we'd want to talk to the participant about that. We'd also refer that to our Chief Risk Officer Division in our fraud and investigation team and also to the Commission, because that would require an investigation that the Commission would undertake.
Right. And if you are concerned that, that the participant has in fact been coerced, is there anything more you can do other than those steps you, you've just pointed out about where you'd refer it to? What can the NDIS itself do?
Again, we put specialist coordination of support in the plan to ensure that there are eyes on that participant and the participant has access to someone to advocate for them to, to stop the coercion.
Just excuse me a moment. Just have one last question for you. Have you seen this, the joint statement that was prepared by Ms Mitchell and Mr Favel?
Yes.
So you may recall that in that statement, they referred to an investigation of a five hundred million dollar underspend of, five, five hundred million dollar SDA underspend. What can you tell us about firstly, what that underspend means?
Well, I think they explained, not really an underspend. Their explanation was that that was an estimate made by the Productivity Commission as to the expected cost of the program and it turns out to be five hundred million dollars less. If that's the correct explanation, it's not really an underspend. I know that's what they said in the statement. But anyway, if you know anything about it and whatever this means, please tell us.
Yeah, I don't really, counsel, but it's something that I can take on notice for you.
I'm not sure that the numbers provided by the Productivity Commission in two thousand and eleven have necessarily all stood the test of time.
We don't need you to take that one on notice. I just wanted to see if there was anything further you could add to, to what we'd already heard. Chair, those are my questions for this witness. I now hand it to you.
Thank you very much. Miss Short, if you don't mind, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Galbally in Melbourne and ask whether Commissioner Galbally wishes to ask you some questions.
Um, thank you. The, the question I'd like to ask is about specialist support coordination and whether everyone at risk of homelessness would have a specialist support coordinator? And who, how, who are, who are they and where does one get one from?
Thanks, Commissioner. There's three levels. There's three levels of support coordination. There's level one, which is sort of support connection. So it's very basic, aimed at just linking a participant in with community and mainstream. Level two is support coordination, which is more intensive and more of a wraparound support. And then specialist coordination is a higher level, it's paid at a higher level, and it requires a support coordinator to have specific knowledge of navigating mainstream systems and supporting participants to navigate complex mainstream systems. So everyone who had, was, would be identified by the agency of at risk of homeless or homelessness certainly should have access to a specialist support coordinator, rather than just a general support coordinator.
And would that be the same for everyone in an emergency situation like Colin? Would they have a specialist support coordinator?
Colin's support coordination was already in his plan during, you know, prior to the flood, but I do believe Colin has an upcoming plan reassessment date booked in whereby, yes, he will be offered specialist support coordination.
But there's no system at the moment for when there isn't an emergency of that kind to just automatically upgrade that role on the grounds that it's going to be very tough and, you know, tricky for people with disabilities.
Absolutely, but yeah, you're right, Commissioner, there is no current system for us to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ra.
Thanks. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions about paragraph twenty-five of your statement, which relates to self-reported information from participant, NDIS participants about the sort of housing they live in. And I noticed a couple of the options. Option D is large residential, less than twenty, and the other, a small resident, sorry, greater than twenty, and small residential, less than twenty. To the best of my knowledge, large residential centres have been outlawed since 1980 and should have been being closed. What is the NDIS doing funding people for SIL, living in large residential centres? And should there not be a plan to make sure that that stops happening?
Yes, Commissioner, this, this list in the short, this short form outcomes framework questionnaire was developed during trial and transition and probably does need to be updated. So during that time, we were actually exiting participants from large residential centres, which is why this is identified here. But you're quite correct, that needs to be updated and taken off the list.
Do we have people living in large residential centres still in Australia? Because I, my observation is, I've seen a couple in operation during the course of the Royal Commission operating. I suspect that some of the SRSs we're going to talk about later in the week constitute large residential centres. Are you able to tell us that they're gone or that you have a plan to remove them?
Well, I know that there are some SRSs that have over twenty people, so if they're considered a large residential centre using that, that term, but I'm, I'm not sure large residential, residential centres come to my mind as the old, you know, the Stockton Centre or the, you know, those, those large institutions that governments have been working hard to close and, and certainly they're all closed in New South Wales. But if we're including SRSs in that definition, then you could assume that some still exist.
Are you able to give the Royal Commission an assurance that there wouldn't be people you're providing SIL support for that are living in residential centres that might have fifteen or twenty people living together? Because I have a feeling I've seen one or two.
Yes. I'm not sure whether this witness can give that assurance or.
Yes, I think that's right. Well, I don't think it's.
Thank you, Chair.
I asked Ms Short to give an assurance.
Well, could you provide?
On behalf of the Australian, NDIA, the Australian Government or anybody else.
Fair enough, but could you provide information as to whether or not the NDIS is aware of whether there is, there are still large residential centres operating in Australia that would, would have closed by now under arrangements that existed before the NDIS commenced? Because I think I've seen a couple.
Okay.
One in Tasmania that's got forty-odd units all clustered together on a site that's very close to a garbage dump. And there are some legacy models that have been left over in earlier attempts to close large residential centres that resulted in significant clusters of housing all located together. I'd like to know whether the NDIS is aware of that or not, and if they could provide the Royal Commission with any information about them.
Certainly, Commissioner.
Thank you. We might have been given information about this in one of the twenty-five earlier hearings, but if so, I don't remember. You've told us about the three categories of support coordinators. What are the, is there some kind of registration requirement for each of those categories? How does, can the same person do all three or how does it work?
No, Chair, the same person couldn't do all three. So there's registration in, in the framework for support coordination that it outlines what skills and qualifications we would expect from a specialist support coordinator in particular.
So people get registered according to their category, whether they're category one, two or three?
They may be registered for all three, but they need to ensure that the staff that provide that service are paid at the higher level, and that's why we provide a higher, higher cost for the specialist support coordination, because we expect a higher level of skills and experience and qualifications.
So in any particular instance, a support coordinator who's allocated to someone like Colin might in fact have the qualifications for a special support coordinator. We'd need to inquire in the particular case whether that is so.
Yep.
Yes, I understand, thank you.
Mr Chair, could I just ask one other question? Paragraph one hundred and eighteen of your statement refers to what people would need to do to get necessary and reasonable home modifications. And one of the requirements is a suitably qualified occupational therapist has performed an assessment and recommended home modifications considering all possible alternatives, including the use of equipment. It looks like the NDIS has the same obsession with occupational therapists that New South Wales disability has, or the New South Wales CG, what's it called, Community and Justice Department has. Is it absolutely necessary for a person always to have an occupational therapist, which is a considerable amount of money and time to get one of those, to make quite often a submission to the NDIS, which would be to get housing, which would qualify for the Silver Level NCC? And the person, for example, might be using a wheelchair, and I would have thought it was the bleeding obvious that they needed those modifications.
Certainly, Commissioner. The NDIA doesn't require an OT assessment for minor home mods and adjustments like handrails or, or ramps, and participants can purchase that, that stuff through their core supports.
What about the removal of a hub, a hob in the shower, for example?
So at the moment, we do require an occupational therapy assessment for those reasons. And I think the role of the OTs to be able to assess a participant in their environment and, and recommend better ways that a participant or things that could assist a participant to be more independent in their own home. So the, the agency at the moment is considering, or the government is considering allowing lower-cost home mods to not require an assessment by an OT at all, that the participant can, can organise for those minor modifications to occur without the need for an assessment or a quote.
I wouldn't mind extending the scope of that project, but I applaud it. Could be a practical example of competition policy in action.
All right, thank you very much, Ms Short, for giving evidence today and for the detailed statement that you have provided. We very much appreciate the assistance you've given to the Royal Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioners, the final witness for the New South Wales part of the hearing is some evidence provided by Dave, which is a pseudonym. And I'm pleased to say Dave is here with us in the hearing room. But what we might do is just show the pre-recorded evidence, but I don't require Dave to come up or present himself to you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll, we'll have that evidence now.
I'm happy this morning to be talking to Dave, which is not your real name, but we're going to go with Dave, is that all right, Dave? And Dave, we're down here in Newtown, and we're in the inner west of Sydney, and this is an area that you know pretty well. So Dave, can I start, tell us what your story is?
Well, I first had some contact with the mental health workers when I was eight or nine because of my parents. And first time, I lived in boarding house sort of style accommodation, would have been when I was about sixteen.
How did you get into boarding house at sixteen?
Divorced, um, living with a father on a pension, that was the accommodation he could afford, motel-style accommodation. I assume it's the same sort of thing as a boarding house, very similar in every respect. And then, you know, when I go well, I get a flat, when things, when I get stressed out, run down over time, back to the boarding house. And of course, as time goes on, the gaps between jobs just gets longer and longer. Now I'm over sixty, really, you know, just looking for the finishing line.
Oh, Dave, so can I take you back a little bit to when you were a teenager?
What could you?
So do you remember what it was like at school? If you had mental health problems at school, what was that like?
Well, they didn't, nothing resembling problems that I was aware of really until year eleven. I'm a bit of an isolator. I come in, I do enough to keep the system off my back and then I disappear.
So what did you do when you finished school?
Ah, uni for a while, I got a couple of credits in first year arts, but too unstable. By then, even the father had pissed off, so I had to support myself. Didn't know what I wanted to do, drink it too much as well. So I got out of there, got a job and pretty much self-supporting on it, pretty much self-supporting there, aren't you?
What sort of jobs have you done in your life?
My first phase of the career, public service jobs, I worked for State Rail, Australia Post, Department of Social Security, Department of Government Stores, the Navy, maybe one other, two others. That was sort of phase, first third of my working life. Second third, I managed to make a go of some stuff, bit left field in, quote, performing arts in schools, worked myself to exhaustion after fifteen years of that. I was totally placed to collapse physically, mentally on every level. The last, that's another third, the last third has been call centres, mostly charity fundraising stuff. But even with that, I've, you know, the jobs get further and further apart. I become less and less employable, but, yeah, a social isolator, so.
So tell me about some of the places that you lived in, because I think when you chatted to me before, there's in and out of hostels and boarding houses.
Not hostels, fortunately, I haven't got to the.
Yeah, we talked about hostels.
Yeah, we talked about boarding houses, not, to me, they're not the last resort. Last resort is couch surfing, temporary hostels or the park.
Yep.
Or prison, because a lot of people go in and out.
And, and that's not been your experience?
Fortunately, managed to avoid all of those.
And so most of your living has sort of been in different boarding houses?
Boarding house to flat. Well, this one has been, I've been there for fifteen, sixteen years. And fortunately, there's a good landlord, it's had a nice, until recently, it had a good stable population. People, all of these are old buildings and old housing stock, because the people that make a difference, whether they've got their lives together or whether they're running right.
I think you said the human environment is more important than the sort of physical environment. What does that mean?
Well, if you can get on with the people, if you can get on with the people, leave your door open without fear of being robbed. If they're quiet, they're not violent, and they're not thieves, then you can live in peace and, you know, if you live together long enough, you get to know each other.
And, and a lot of the people you've lived with at different points in time also had disabilities. We've talked about how you work out whether somebody has a disability or you identify yourself in that way, but I think you've told me that that's sort of something you've seen?
I think everyone who's passed through the place has, has at the least been really unlucky in their family life, but a couple have had heart surgery followed by minor issues which stopped them working again and get older. Couple have come out of them with, you know, usually drug issues before they go in. We were lucky, you know, we had a run of people who managed to clean up their lives and stay out of trouble, but they're never getting out of a boarding house, except maybe to the housers. Yeah, quite a few people, probably half of them have prison in their background with mental health issues. We have one at the moment with autism spectrum and been hit by a bus as well and can't keep himself out of petty crime. Got a couple of social isolators, there's one guy there I've said six words to maybe in a couple of years. He just doesn't seem to, he's not unfriendly, but he just doesn't want to talk to people, doesn't want to deal with people, only comes out when necessary. But he's five foot tall, very lean, so I don't know what's got on in his life story. I've got a curry guy pushing seventy. Couple of these guys have been sort of functional alcoholics, you know, they pay the rent, they keep their lifestyle together without getting into trouble with the law or their neighbours. You know, that's functional enough, isn't it?
And you've told me that you really like reading and, although, been watching.
You've got a bit of gardening going, happening, yeah.
How does that sort of help you in your life, doing those sorts of activities? Does that give you a sort of sense of?
A lot of poverty is really mental, is what you can think of. I mean, one, one of the guys, got his $2.50 pension a ticket, spends the day on the trains and the buses, goes, you know, Indonesian, there's a big community of them around Kensington, so he goes over there, bumps into people, talks language, has a nice little lunch, goes to the Bondi, you know, takes advantage of this beautiful city. But other people seem to have nothing in their head but their grievances. I noticed that with the worst of the mental health cases. Some of them are just going in a mental cycle of their grievances and looking for those patterns to reappear.
So is the NDIS, is that something that is part of your life or you've heard about for the guys that you live with?
One of the guys has been through the whole system and got his pension and some NDIS component. It did, look, I don't like dealing with the system, so just to go through all that now, I would happily forfeit a hundred bucks a week to avoid all that. But some of the older ones, you know, you try, they're, they're set in their ways. It's great that these services are offered, but if they, they feel that they're pushed on them, then.
I'll lean to it. So what sort of supports are around? Is it local community or neighbourhood supports?
I really, I really don't know, because as I said, the only one who's gone through that system, it's all too complicated. He tends to tell me I should try it and I'd close my mind, do it. But I really just wouldn't, he, he loved mucking around and reading all that stuff, but I just wouldn't want to. And it's a bit of an admission of defeat, certainly not for me, because I'm just borderline this or that, you know, I'm functional enough to stay out of major trouble. I changed my lifestyle before my health collapsed, you know, I did not have that heart attack or stroke, these sort of things.
It sounds like you, you sort of look after yourself and make decisions for yourself.
Well, I'm still capable of that, but yeah, I really, I respect that there are a lot of people who can. While I can, it's my last bit of freedom, so the, you know, being self-managing is, you know, my last shred of self-respect.
Commissioners also sort of keen to know, what, what do you think needs to change to support people with disability who, you know, don't live in the sort of average or ordinary housing and their housing might not be so stable? What do you think would make a difference from your own experiences, but also the folk around the neighbourhood centre where we are today? What do you think the Royal Commission should know?
First of all, you've mentioned the neighbourhood centre, so this sort of resource where if you want to meet people or they want to meet you, you are there, literally three minutes walk from my home, and there are a lot of boarding houses around here, so you're very close to a lot of your target audience. That accessibility for those who need it, I, I'm from a, like most of the, most of the, not all of the boarding house demographic, I'm old and set in my ways, you know. There are a couple of younger people and transgender people who've been through, but by and large, you're old and set in our ways and having enough money to. having enough money to pay the rent, a few, few luxuries and to stay out of problems with society. Yeah, for me personally, I'm a hardcore tobacco addict, so the price of government policy on tobacco affects me. Um, but the, the services being there but not sort of pushed on them. And for the serious, for the people who seriously need these services, I, I can't. Yeah, I have a thing about these service providers as an unnecessary. I haven't experienced them in the N D I S, but where I have experienced them, they're unnecessary and useless. You'd be better off just giving the money direct to the people who knew how to spend it. Instead of subsidising something, you know, if you give them an extra hundred, two hundred a week, then they can come up descending. They can actually afford to do that more easily. Um, just seems, you know, like unnecessary, yeah, I'd let the free market go on that, just empower. The last thing they ever seem to want to do is empower the people. We saw it in Aboriginal affairs with however many years of all the money going to white public servants and white landlords and white consultants and by the time you get to the ground, there's nothing.
Yeah.
And that's sort of, um, unskillful.
So I sort of really take a grassroots approach, go to the people?
Yeah, keep these services on the ground. I mean, if the day comes when I want to know, you know, want to know about these things or my circumstances change and I think I need to know about these things, you're just here. And this, what do they call it here, the one-stop shop?
Hmm.
Is far less intimidating than going into, say, the Department of Social Security and asking questions there or doing things on the phone, um, very accessible.
Well, Dave, absolutely. Pleasure to talk to you today and thank you for your time and sharing your story and, um, talking to us at the Royal Commission. We really appreciate it. Commissioners and, um, thank you to Dave, who I can see in.
Yes, thank you, Dave. I don't know where you are in the audience, but thank you very much for doing that extraordinarily interesting interview with, um, Ms Eastman and giving us, uh, the benefits of, uh, your experience, uh, which you put very clearly, if I may say so.
So Commissioners, that, um, completes the New South Wales part of the hearing and tomorrow we'll turn our attentions to Victoria. So if we adjourn now, and as I said earlier, the Royal Commission's hosting an afternoon tea for some of the services that support people with disability in Western Sydney and everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll adjourn until, uh, ten A M.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.